The meeting is now open.
Thank you and good evening. The time is 5:30 and we're calling the Tuesday, November 14th, 2023, Meeting of the Azusa Unified School District Board of Education to Order. Moving to item 1.2, Roll Call. Board Vice President Rodriguez Pena.
President.
Board Clerk Arianas.
Here.
Board Member Greer.
Here.
Board Member Benavides.
Here.
And Board President Bo is also present. Moving to item 1.3, Approval of the Agenda. May I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And the item passes unanimously. Now moving to item 2.1, Public Comment on Closed Session Agenda Items. Leica or Hope, are there any members of the public for participation at this time? No blue cards? And Leica, is anyone in, on Zoom for public comment on closed session agenda items?
We have no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. The time is now 5:31. We will adjourn to closed session and will return at 7:00 PM for open session. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting for the Azusa Unified School District. The time is now 7:00 PM and we will begin with our open session. We have here today to this in the Patch of Allegiance, 5th grade student from Murray Elementary, Ms. Elena Arias. Elena, if you could join us at the podium.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated.
Let's have a round of applause for Ms. Arias.
Moving on to item 5.0, Report Action Taken in Closed Session. The board did not take any action in closed session. As we begin the agenda for tonight, I'd like to share with everyone that we will be taking public comment when we get to item 7.0. At that point, we'll be taking public comment on agenda or non-agenda items with the exception of item 14.0, the public hearing. So for all members of the public, if you're here to share your comments regarding the charter petition during item 14.0, we're going to take that public comment during that item. So for 7.0, public comment will be for non-agenda items, agenda items with the exception of the public hearing, and then all comments regarding the charter school petition will be taken during the agendized public hearing agenda item. And I'll do another info session when we get closer to that item as well. And now moving on to item 6.0, Ms. Ortega.
Thank you, Dr. Bo. Tonight, we are proud to honor Dr. Bo for recognizing her for one entire year as the Board President here in Azusa. We appreciate your leadership. We appreciate your facilitation and we appreciate your commitment to this role. Tonight, we do have Board Vice President, Ms. Yolanda Rodriguez Pena, who would like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to present this beautiful plaque with a gavel presented to Sabrina Bo, Dr. Sabrina Bo, in appreciation for your service and Board President of the Azusa Unified School District, 15th, 2022 through November 30th, 2023. If we could be the front and take a picture, please.
A board while you are up in front taking pictures. We were notified that we have a special guest in the audience today who would like to provide a special recognition. We are very pleased to have our guest, Mr. Padilla, who is the Board President of Armani Union High School District. So, Mr. Padilla, if you'd like to go to the, over to the podium and present Dr. Bo. Good evening, Madam Board President, President Dr. Sabrina Bo, Vice President Ms. Yolanda Rodriguez Pena, Clerk Ms. Gabriela Arianas, Board Member Mr. Adrian Greer, and Board Member Sandra Benavides, Superintendent Mr. Ortega, staff and the entire family from Azusa. My name is Ricardo Padilla. I am the proud President of the Almani Union High School District Board. I had been a school board member for 10 years, but I had never had the privilege of being president myself. This is the first year in all my years of service and I know that when you're a board member, you're all equals, even if you're the president, you don't have special powers. But I can tell you firsthand like how much the time commitment is and the time away from your family and sitting down with the superintendent and discussing every item on the agenda. I know how much work that has and that it takes. And so with this being the first year that Dr. Sabrina Bo completes as President, I wanted to come here before you and all of your colleagues, Dr. Bo. I have a special relationship with every single one of you. We see each other at the California School Board Association Conference and we talk about a lot of issues that affect education and there's a lot of things that affect education. And so the reason that I'm here for Dr. Sabrina Bo is because I had never experienced being president myself. And again, that's even after 10 years, people will ask me, well, what took you so long? And in school districts, different things happens for many reasons. But the reason is that, the important thing is that I finally got to be the president. I know how it feels and all the work. And so I wanted to come here and just articulate and give this certificate of recognition to Dr. Sabrina Bo. Dr. Bo, I would like to present you with this certificate and all of my colleagues on the board send their best wishes and their congratulations. Myself, Ricardo Padilla as the President, my Vice President, Professor Stella Torres de Segres, my Clerk, Mr. Qui Nguyen, and my additional Board, Mr. Florencio Breones and Mr. Carlos Alcido. On behalf of our entire board and our family, to yours, who's the family here, all the teachers and parents and all the children. What a beautiful flag salute. It's awesome that you guys bring your students because at the end of the day, that is our why. And it needs to be clearly defined that for all board members, the why should be our kids and our families. You know, the teachers, you have your union, the CSDA, you have your union and it's up to the board to represent everybody, the teachers, the CSDA, the children and the, and the family. So I have to compliment you on how beautiful your boardroom is. This is, this is a beautiful facility. And I know the last time I was here, I was here for the signing of Ms. Gabriela Arianas and it didn't look like this. So this is very respectful of your teachers and it looks like a very fancy place. So congrats to you guys. And I mean that because it looks very classy and I think that that's what the teachers and the families and everybody deserves when they come to see their Azusa Unified School District. So for your exceptional leadership, Dr. Sabrina Bo, thank you for your service and the dedication as Board President of the Azusa Unified School District. Thank you for your unwavering commitment and passion for education that you have left, you have left an indelible mark on the lives of the students throughout your tenure. Congratulations from the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. And thank you, thank you so much as a professional colleague, but also as my friend. And I'm glad that I'm able to be here and articulate those words in front of your Azusa family. So.
Thank you so much for supporting. Thank you for this opportunity to be recognized for my service as Board President. I invited my family to be here with me, my husband and my two beautiful daughters here in the front row. Every time I go to a board meeting or a commission meeting or any type of meeting, I say mommy's going to go to work now. And so they see that when I leave them at home. And so I wanted to make sure that they got to see full circle what it's about. So Emily and Sophia and Daddy, thank you for being here to support me. And I hope that I continue to make you proud. So thank you, girls. Thank you, Daddy. Moving to item 6.2, Recognition of Lee Elementary School. I'd like to call upon Ms. Diana Rojas, Principal of Lee Elementary School.
Good evening, Dr. Bo, Board of Education members, Cabinet and attendees. On behalf of our Lee parents, students and staff, we are honored and excited to receive this recognition. I would like to introduce you to our Lee parent group. So I ask that they join me up here or please stand. Thank you. Our parent group at Lee is strong and mighty. They are dedicated, enthusiastic, creative and talented. They are always willing to do anything for our students and our school. Therefore, they did not hesitate one bit to use their collaborative spirit to meet every Thursday morning for a month to produce the beautiful safari float that they designed and created using their own hands. I am grateful for each and every one of them because they provided our students with an amazing float and a fun experience as we proudly represented our school down the parade route. I'm also grateful for this moment because it highlights the power of parent and school partnerships and with that, anything is possible. In closing, thank you again for having us here tonight and thank you, Lee parents, for all that you do for us. Congratulations. We are two for two when it comes to the Golden Days Parade.
At this time, I'd like to, to my board colleagues, if they wish to make any comments on this item.
Yes, I'd like to say that your thought was so cute. They had all these animals, right? And you young ladies must took a great time in making those animals because I knew it was going to win when I seen it. It was beautiful.
And thank you so much for your hard work and dedication. We have a small certificate here. I'll read it and then we'll, if you would join me and my colleagues in the middle for a photo. This says, Azusa Unified School District Certificate of Recognition. It's proudly presented to Lee Elementary School for placing second in the 2023 Azusa Golden Days Parade float category given this day, November 14th, 2023. Congratulations. And now for item 6.3, Recognition of Gladstone Middle School Cheer Team for placing second in the marching category in the Golden Days Parade. Mr. Padilla.
Good evening, Dr. Bo, Board Members, Cabinet and Attendees. I would like to thank the board for recognizing the GMS cheer team for placing in the Golden Days Parade. This is a well-deserved honor because these girl, these ladies have worked so hard this past year to deliver their best routines at sporting and other special events. Of course, this could not have occurred without the leadership of their cheer advisor, Vicky Morquez, and their cheer coach, Diana. Ladies, the GMS staff and students and parents are so proud of you. Now, I asked them today if they wanted to do a little cheer and they said absolutely. So, girls, go out there and let's get something done for them. Let's go. Thank you so much.
Ladies, if you could join us, ladies, coaches and advisors, you could try to, in the middle, for a photo opportunity. We are proud to present you on behalf of the Azusa Unified School District, the certificate of recognition proudly presented to Gladstone Middle School Cheer for placing second in the 2023 Azusa Golden Days Parade Marchers category this day, 14th day of November, 2023. Congratulations.
Ms. Vicky?
Yeah, I want to say something. I want to have this girls.
Cheer team, if we could have you back. Yeah, I would like to thank you, young ladies, and a great job they did. I practiced out there and also Ms. Vicky, she's the best coach in all of Azusa. My granddaughter was a gladiator high. And someone told me that I'm wearing the wrong colors, but no, I'm wearing the right colors, red and black. I just wanted to, ladies, that you did a great job. It's really, this is the first year that you girls are cheerleaders and how does it feel? Beautiful, right? Awesome. And Ms. Vicky is the number one coach in the city of Azusa. I can honestly say that. She was my granddaughter's cheer coach when she went to Gladstone High School. And I was just going to tell them that one of my friends in here said I'm wearing the wrong colors and I'm like, nope, I'm wearing red and black. Gladiators. Good job.
I would like to congratulate you guys for an honor in being the first Gladstone Middle School Cheer Team. So give yourselves a round of applause. It warms my heart that I see your passion and dedication and thank you to the coaches. You know what? Your cheer teams, not your cheer team, unless you guys dedicate those long hours and you two girls, a lot of practice and you can tell. And as I know, I was a coach for 20 years for cheer here in the city of Azusa and I can testify that definitely. Vicky, you were many, many years did we collaborate with the young elementary girls and with the high school and the middle schools. And so I have faith that you guys will rock, will rock this year with your routines and your cheers. And I can't wait to see what you guys have. You go, girls. Thank you.
I just want, I'm sorry, I want to take a few minutes to just say congratulations to both Lee Elementary and Gladstone for all your hard work and dedication to the students, to the coach. And you know, somebody told me this weekend that if we look at everything, there's art in everything, right? And that's exactly what I thought about this. One stranger I met at a museum this weekend, she said that to me and I, she said that she works with scraps that people throw away, right? And there's beauty in that. And I said, you know, that's so true because in everything we do, there's art. And I mean, it's obvious here tonight that there's so much artistic talent in, at Azusa Unified School District. Thank you, ladies, for, you know, taking the award. Thank you so much for every, everyone.
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you again for your hard work. It shows and you brought a lot of vitality and life to our board meeting. So thank you so much and have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, now we see.
Moving on to item 7.1, Public Comment on Agenda or Non-Agenda Items. I will reiterate that at this time, we'll be taking public comment on non-agenda items, public comment on agenda items with the exception of public comment for item 14.0, the public hearing for the charter petition. And so with that, Hope, are there any blue cards for 7.1 comment on non-agenda or other agenda items? And Leica, do we have any members of the public online in that category of public comment?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. Moving to item 8.1, Comments, Reports and Requests by the Board of Education. We'll start with Board Vice President Rodriguez Pena.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to answer it. I went to Plant and Murray Elementary School for the community resource fair. They had some, many great booths. It had youth, help, help lines, blood pressure checks, Department of Mental Health, well-being centers. And they were able to, for medical and senior support groups. And I want to give kudos. Great job, the community schools. I see they're progressing and they're doing things within the community, which that's what they call community schools, right? And you know, I noticed many parents also, you know, getting the blood pressure check and, and you know, I don't know if they have insurance or not, but I think it's great that we offer this service to the community. And we chose Azusa High School to, high school basketball game. And I'm really proud of the young men from Sierra High School. They won San Antonio, right? By the skin of 59 through 57. And I'm really proud of these young men that go out. You know, at Sierra High School, they don't play for CIF. They play because they want to play. And I think, at some point, I would like to recognize and let them know, you know, to include them. And even if we can give them a certificate or something, I would like to do that for them. The All Ed Foundation, our Golden Days fundraiser, great success. I'd like to thank the members of CSA, Diana Ochoa, Lori Way, Sandra Arthur, Patricia Sanchez, that are back in the room, CSA. This always comes out and helps us and I really, we really appreciate them. And also our, thank, thank all of our sponsors. Especially Think Together. Think Together actually gave us the sponsorship to continue our education, which the foundation gives scholarships every year. What was three high schools, now we give them to two high schools, but I think we're going to still give three to Azusa High School and programs for students and staff of Azusa Unified School District. I went to the elementary, things light out, that thing, out. They had ambassador, a little, ambassador, a little fourth grader, a really cute, showing us around, really proud and showing us the things that they do after school. They do their homework. And you know, they get time to play and they had a really cute art show that they had in the cafeteria. And these students, they do this every year just to highlight what Think Together does after school. I'm going to, as a high school girls, the first, girls, flag football. I arrived at the second half and they kicked against Duarte and my friend, he was a board member, Duarte High School and he goes, oh, you're going to go see the game, man? We're going to go and see. I said, okay, we'll see. So I first get there, right? And what happens? Zero. Lady asks, X, zero. Second half, which I'm going to do this, what, what half are we? I'm worried. Okay. The end of, the end of the game, 18, lady asked, and I, and I, and okay, Tom, I'll see you next time, right? But the only thing, I think they were, and I'll say this, we need a scoreboard. I didn't know what the scoreboard was. I just got there and I'm like, okay, there's no scoreboard here. There's no, I mean, are we in halftime? Third time, I don't even know how it works, but thank God that Mr., Mr., the vice, well, Mr. Velasco, he said, Yolanda, we're in the second half and where this, he was my timekeeper. So we need a scoreboard with big numbers. I like to invest in that, Mr. Ortega. Thank you. And then I went to the Azusa High School, large, break. Many, many students came to visit the booth. It had UC, Cal State, the Odyssey University Military, the adult school, these schools. And I think we're here is to give students options, to give them options where they can select where they want to be and where do they want to study and not just go to one place. I'm glad that Azusa Unified does offer these to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Clerk Gabriela Arianas.
I would like to take this time to thank all the schools, the principals, the teachers, the parents that took the time to be part of the Golden Days Parade. And it means a lot. This Golden Days Parade has been around, gosh, right? Older than me. But it's great to see the new generation be part of this, of this tradition here in Azusa. And it makes me very proud that we, as Azusa Unified School District, have taken a part of this as a community in each school. So thank you for everybody that participated. And Thanksgiving is next week. I would like to wish all of you guys a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Remember to take your vitamin Z, zinc, what else? D, right? So that way we are healthy in making sure, but make sure that you guys stay safe and bless you guys all on Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Gordon Rodriguez Pena, did you say that you showed up at the game and at halftime it was 12 to zero? Then with your presence. Then with your presence being there.
I don't want to say that, but thank you.
I, I move that, uh, Gordon Rodriguez Pena is present at every sports game. No, I, I wanna, I wanna echo some of the, the comments from my colleague and, and one, thank all of the, the schools and represented at Golden Days, the, the students, the teachers, the classified staff, the parents, e- everybody who was there and, and, and made it beautiful. It was, it was incredible to, to be there and to see Azusa Unified School District just, just represented so well. So, um, I, it was a, it was a, just a jewel in the gem to, to be part of that with you all, with my community this, this past month. So kudos on that. And then similarly, we got Thanksgiving coming up. We're heading into the holidays. And so it's, it's kind of the home stretch. And so wanna, wanna just encourage everybody to, to get some rest this upcoming week. Hopefully you're able to, to eat well and energize and, and get ready for, uh, finishing up the, the year strong. So, um, happy holidays to everybody.
So I just wanted to say, um, thank you to all the students and the teachers and parents and staff who showed up at the Golden Days Parade and the community at large as well. Um, it was a great event. It was nice to hear that every, uh, school participated at the Golden Days Parade. I really enjoyed it. Uh, so I, I look, I'm looking forward to the next Golden Days Parade. And, um, I had an opportunity to attend the Veterans Celebration at Paramount Elementary. And I'll tell you that I was touched. I, it was an emotional moment for me. And the reason why is because I saw all the little ones, right? That they were being so patriotic. And to me, that, that symbolizes a lot. And, um, I just feel that, um, we need to, you know, love our country. We have a lot of privileges here that we take for granted. And I just feel so grateful that the little ones are learning that, you know, we need to embrace, um, the USA. So with that being said, um, I also think there was a lot of talent there, creativity. The teachers put in a lot of hard work, um, the coordinators. And so I want to say thank you for that. I enjoyed it. I had the time of my life. I really, um, like I said, it was a really emotional moment for me, but it was nice to be there and see that it was Azusa students doing, you know, celebrating this. So, um, and I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
And Board Vice President Pena, you had an additional comment?
I was just gonna add one more thing regarding Golden Days. I do want to thank all the schools that came out. They were so creative. Their floats that they had and everything. And I was so excited, right? So, um, I don't know if you talking to older people, but people that knew Fernando Valenzuela, right? And I'm trying, since someone called me out, I tell board member Greer, I said, Fernando Valenzuela's gonna be there. He's like, who's that? Can I believe that? I was so excited. And I'm like, sports or anything? He's like, no. I, I forgot what he said he did. He was dancing. I don't know, but he did not, he did not know him. I can't believe it. I just want to, I just want the people to know. I'm sorry.
I, um, wanted to express my appreciation for all the veterans in our community, um, who are honored in, um, our city ceremony and at various festivals and other ceremonies throughout the San Gabriel Valley. Um, I was also able to, um, commemorate Veterans Day with my own family, um, with my father and with, uh, my youngest brother, who are both, uh, US Army vets. And how this connects to education, um, I, uh, I want to emphasize that as a district that validates and supports all college and career pathways, that we would remiss if we don't recognize military service as an equitable and honorable career pathway. At the same time, when we say our students, we advocate, we want them to make choices for leadership, whether it's college and career or career, whatever that career pathway is. Um, speaking as an educator, I can say that I, I've experienced the sort of anti-military bias in educational systems. And so I'm taking this opportunity on the heels of Veterans Day to uphold the idea that our students, we're giving them agency to choose their college and career path and that the military, in the same way that we honor our veterans and we say thank you for your service. Our students have every opportunity to choose that as their honorable and equitable career pathway. Um, so with that, um, acknowledging all veterans and veteran families, um, on Veterans Day and every day. So thank you so much. Moving on to item nine point one, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, Dr. Bo. Um, I'd like to first call up, um, Mariah Santos from Sierra High School, uh, to give a student report.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Ortega and Cabinet. As always, I'm excited to be here representing Sierra High School. Since the last meeting, a lot has been going on at Sierra. We had fun participating in our seventy-fifth Azusa Golden Days Parade, where our school and programs were recognized. And we were able to enjoy the morning together, students and Sierra team on our decorated float. We had fun. Um, we finished our basket, we finished out our basketball season, although we won some in Lhasa and we played very well and really grew as a team. Over the last month, we had a variety of fun Sierra spirit activities, like our classroom door decorating contest, Halloween, and our annual Dia de los Muertos celebration. It was great to see our school community come together and remember our loved ones and celebrate the season. We also finished out our successful first trimester with a lunchtime visit from Citrus College. Citrus shares some of their traditional degree options, career, training, education options, and about their promise program, which grants graduates up to two years of college for free. I can't believe we're already one-third of the way through the school year. We just started our second trimester and also welcome some new transfer students from Azusa High School. We are in the running to be recognized again as a model continuation high school with our school's visit coming up on Thursday, November thirtieth. This will be an opportunity for us to share some of the great things happening at Sierra. Some other events coming up, we have our first trimester student awards on Friday, December first. Our soccer season kicks off with our first away game on Wednesday, December sixth. We're off to a great start for our second trimester. Go Sierra Spartan.
Thank you, Mariah. Uh, I'd like to turn it over now to Emily Hernandez, our student board member from Azusa High School.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Azusa High School Community Schools is launching the first phase of its listening campaign with an assets and needs assessment being conducted from November thirteenth through December twenty-first. Azusa High School aims to get a hundred percent response rate from students, parents and staff by the end of January of twenty twenty-four. Azusa High School Career Pathway students have been very active in competitions, community engagement, and field trips to give students a better understanding of how their education applies to real life. Medical Academy students assisted in free health screenings in collaboration with APU on November fifth. Engineering students competed in their first robotic competition on November eleventh. And computer science slash IT students attended a field trip to Chirp Solar Works. Students in the digital media pathway have been hard at work recording and producing podcasts that are being ready for public listening soon. Azusa High School's early college program, students attended the Citrus Unity Fair on November seventh and had the opportunity to learn more about campus life at Citrus College while sharing information about different cultures. Azusa High School is very proud of its cross-country team for its efforts and hard work in making it to CIF preliminary races on November tenth and Mount San Antonio College. Four athletes set personal records in a very tough competition against schools from all over CIF Southern Section. And Azusa High School's marching band and color guard performed at, at the Duarte Field Show Tournament on November tenth and performed at the CSBC Championship on November eleventh and, at Newport Beach. The band performance season is unfortunately now over, but we are still looking forward to more band performances when we can hear them later this year. And lastly, we would like to give a congratulations to Naima Evangelista and Addie Gonzalez, who received honorable mentions for their artwork that was entered in the twenty twenty-three Tournament of Roses Dia de los Muertos Art Competition. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I begin my comment, I just want to, uh, point out that the, uh, girls' football game, uh, that Ms. Yolanda Rodriguez, Board President, Board Vice President Yolanda Rodriguez Pena mentioned, uh, is not only, was not only a girls' football game. Uh, want to, uh, congratulate and highlight that it is a CIF sanctioned game. And so we have a CIF, uh, girls' football team. So just want to shout out to Azusa High School. Uh, on behalf of cabinet, uh, tonight, uh, we want to once again, uh, congratulate, uh, Dr. Bo uh, for her successful year, uh, as president of the Board of Education. Uh, we also want to give a shout out, uh, to, uh, Lee Elementary School. Well said, Ms. Rojas. Uh, the power of collaboration between, uh, families and homes and schools, uh, is powerful. Uh, and that was in, uh, on display, uh, at the parade and tonight. Uh, and then, uh, to Gladstone Middle School, uh, cheer and, uh, staff. Um, I think, uh, Ms. Rodriguez Pena said, or no, Ms. Arianez, somebody said, uh, the first ever, the first ever, uh, Gladstone, uh, Middle School, uh, cheer team. Um, if you were not there, um, it, it was a sight, uh, to see so many, uh, uh, cheerleaders marching down, uh, the street, uh, was pretty powerful. So, uh, again, uh, on behalf of cabinet, congratulations to everyone tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. We're now moving to item ten one of the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, Ms. Hernandez, your student preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And board members will vote? Uh, Hope, my, um, it's not syncing for me. Is it syncing for anyone else online to vote? Okay, in interest of time, we'll take a hand vote. Board Member Benavides?
Board Vice? Yes.
Board Clerk? Yes. Board Member Greer?
Yes.
Uh, Board President is, yes, the item passes unanimously. Now moving to item twelve point zero, twelve, uh, twelve point zero curriculum and instruction, twelve point one, uh, Ms. Camacho.
Good evening, Dr. Bo, Board of Education, Superintendent and Cabinet and attendees. I would like to, um, introduce Mr. Frank Chang, who will be, um, printing on our, um, CTE programs.
How about now? Yeah. Well, first of all, um, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to the board. Um, so I would say first of all, good evening, Board Education, President Dr. Bo, um, members of the board, um, Superintendent Ortega, members of Cabinet, the A U S D community. Um, I'm very happy to see that we're all here to be able to learn a little bit more about our CTE programs. But seriously, thank you for the opportunity to present about our programs. Uh, I also want to introduce, um, Patricia Dorsey. She is a CTE teacher. And she is also a teacher in the, um, computer science pathway as well as the site-based coordinator for our CTE program. So she is a critical piece and all of this that you will be seeing very shortly. Um, I'm also glad to see a lot of our, some of our CTE teachers are still like college and career guidance techs, Lori, Lori Madden. Um, again, teachers classified, we have administrators who have been so supportive. I want to thank them all because all of this work that you'll see in the next, um, few minutes is all a culmination of their hard work and dedication, and it's all for the students. I want to first start off by just giving you a quick overview of the pathway offerings that we have at Azusa High School. For starters, uh, we are concentrating on five industry sectors. Um, and within those five industry sectors, we have eight career pathways. Um, the sectors, of course, you can see is arts, media and entertainment, engineering and architecture, health, science, info tech and transportation. We are currently phasing out, uh, fire technology, emergency medical services and administration of justice. Moving on, the pathways over at Sierra High School, we have, um, the two industry sectors that you see. And there are two pathways that are aligned to pathway offerings over at Azusa High School. So if students are moving from one school to the other, they can continue their pathways. Um, at Azu, uh, Sierra High School, we discontinued the child development pathway as well as the admin of justice pathway. Um, in determining which pathways we decide to, um, continue and offered ongoing support, we look at the job market research. And that projection is usually for three to five years. We review the research annually and we have discussions with our advisory board. And during those discussions, um, as well as the information gathered from what is, um, research market from Centers of Excellence as well as the state, um, um, labor and workforce development department, we know that LA County's priority and emerging sectors align well with what we're doing at A U S D. There are a lot of jobs out there for our students, but we are focused on middle skills and high skills jobs. And middle skills jobs, um, entail some sort of post-secondary, um, either coursework, certification, some sort of an award. And oftentimes, these can be, um, gotten from a community college. High skills jobs require at least a bachelor degree. But we are focusing on middle skills and high skills jobs rather than, um, jobs that you can get when you just graduate from high school. One of the things that we definitely look at when we look at research is to ensure that we are always planning three to five years ahead. So albeit we might start a pathway, we want to make sure that we see it through within these three to five years. And if it's still aligned with the job market, we continue to support it. So next, we have these goals and objectives that our CTE program focuses around. Um, you'll see them in the bullet form, but I just want to elaborate some more. Myself and Patricia will elaborate. And what we do is we feel like these goals and objectives, these focus areas will help our students, um, further their career paths. And one thing that we look at is we look at underrepresented students. And when we talk about underrepresented students, we're referring to our English learners. We're referring to our students with disabilities. We're referring to our homeless and foster youth. And sometimes we refer to underrepresented, um, either females in certain industry or males in certain industries. And with these underrepresented groups, we identify and try to mitigate any barriers that might prevent them to either enroll in our pathways or to persist in those pathways. And so we have myself, we have Patricia Dorsey, we have teachers, we have admin looking at the data to ensure that there's some sort of proportionality in our CTE classes. Currently, we have about nine hundred and fifty students particip- participating in a CTE pathway. We also, through grade six through twelve, look at opportunities for career awareness, exploration and, and essentially preparation. And Patricia will go into more detail about that in a little bit. We have Naviance activities, which do career interest surveys, um, career profiling, uh, things of that nature through grade six through twelve. We also, as you know, a new college and career ready lab over at Gladstone Middle School. And we also have project lead the way and STEM at Gladstone Middle School that essentially feeds into our high school pathways. We ensure that there's alignment so that what students are learning in the middle schools, they can eventually learn more of, um, at the high school. So I'm gonna pass this over to Patricia as she elaborates more on the goals and objectives and, and later slides.
Thank you. Um, hello, everybody. So I wanted to go over the, um, over the, um, professional development, um, bullet. So we take part in several, um, professional development activities. The teachers, admin, counselors, um, conferences and, um, certainly. Conferences and certainly we do. What we're looking at doing more is and externships for teachers. So that teachers can inform students about what what is really out there, right? So that we get some training to bring back to the classroom. So a lot, some resources go to that area. We're also part of advisory groups. So we're part of a consortium, but our pathways have their individual advisory groups as well. So we have a consortium advisory group. And then individual ones for the different pathways. The industry recognized certificate certifications. There, there's another slide that will detail them out for each pathway. But essentially it gives students kind of a proof, proof, as you will, of what they're learning as we finish a pathway. So that they get to put something on their resume that will set them apart from other students. A very important part of of a CTE programs. Work-based learning continuum. So there's three areas, career awareness, career exploration and career preparation. And as you'll see later, we have a lot of industry partners involved there in those different activities. CTSO is a big, a big part of our program and our focus this year. So since the inception of the medical pathway and the. Arts, media and entertainment at Gladstone, they've been since they're involved with the ROP programs, they've had those CTSOs with HOSA. Future Health, Future Health Professionals, I believe it's referred to now. As their part, their students are part of that CTSO, which is student organizations. And they participate in competitions statewide and nationwide. So they have been competing for several years, but now all pathways are part of some kind of CTSO. Just as recently as last week, we finally got authorization for Azusa High to get a chapter for Skills USA. And so Arts, Media and Entertainment, Engineering, IT and Auto Tech is going to going to be involved with that. Organization and that is also has state and national wide competitions. Our a big highlight just happened this weekend. Our engineering students are also participating in first robotics competitions. And they got third place, brand new. They didn't know what they were getting into. Yeah, they got. Third place in this like intro, they call it a, I can't remember what the name is, but they call it their first competition towards. The final that's going to be in February. So they were really excited about that and you can already see the energy, the kids bringing it back to the classroom. So we're excited about that, that that's going to grow. Branding and marketing, we've done a lot of things in that area, especially this last year. Our, our, our CTE logo, our shirts, we're going to get. Branding shirts for polos for our students in all pathways. The medical pathway has their uniforms. So every student, you know, it really brings a presence in it. Brings awareness to not only us as adults, but to the students so that they're asking questions about, you know, what is that? Pathway about and they get, you know, just the name gets out there, right? So if I could go next to the next slide. The next three slides are really about our industry partners and this slide goes or shows. The growth in business partners. We have amazing business partners in this in this district, amazing. They participate in so many things for us and they're they're there whenever we we need them. But this shows the growth from pre pre COVID to to this last year and we're just, we're just growing in numbers. Go ahead and go the next one. So this names, this slide shows you the. Our industry partners who provide internships for our students. Many of them also participate in a lot of our work-based learning activities. Present in our classrooms, provide field trips. Do participate in our mock interviews. We, they just do a lot for us and this, this really shows the students, you know, what's out there for them. And all of our partners really give students an idea of what, what an entry level position is in their organization, all the way up to professional level. So the students really get to see, see the breadth of opportunities there for them. And this is only the partners that are offer our students internships. We have other partners that aren't listed there. One in particular that I've, we've had a relationship with since 2020 is WTS. It's Women's Transportation Seminar. It's a professional organization. And what's great about this is that they offer scholarships for our senior girls. And we've had a winner each year. So this year was Emily Ruiz. I'm not sure. So she's a, an outstanding senior at our school. So it's a really great relationship. This slide shows student participation in paid and unpaid internships. And as you see, pre pandemic, there were some high numbers in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And it decreased just because of the number of opportunities out there, right? For our kids to do things in person. What has resulted though is those opportunities that are virtual have stayed. And have grown. In conjunction with in-person internships. Our NAF Academy that academies were a part of the NAF family, NAF network, and they provide some great opportunities. Raytheon Industries provides internships for us nationwide virtually. And those are paid internships. So we're getting more and more of those and so really active. One of the things that was a highlight this year is for the first time. We had, when the last three years, we had a celebration for our interns that finished their internships on internship day at the end of July. Or National Internship Day. But this year we decided to bring in parents and our industry partners. And they just raved about our students. So it was really, really well done because I think that, you know, parents need to see and and. It's the best thing for parents to see their, their children recognized and they should be, right? And they just raved about our students. Not only the impact they had on the organizations, but the impact they had on the industry partners themselves. Because, you know, the young people give, give us energy, right? So it was, it really showed. Next. So this is shows our, the detail of each pathway. The names of our certifications. So some of those are industry level, for example, CPR. Some of those are high school certifications, but they're informed by industry and edu and higher education. So they are offered to high school students. We have precision exams. That offers certifications and all kinds of things. The, the best thing about this is again, the providing the opportunities for students to show on their resume. What, you know, show what they can do and it's proof there for for anybody looking. They can talk about it. They can just talk about what they learned in their pathway. So once they finish, as they finish a pathway, everybody has the opportunity to, to receive some of these certifications.
So you'd see a number there ninety-six and those are students who received college credit. Taking a Azusa Unified CTE course. And so what we have done is in the last couple of years, we have worked with Citrus College to articulate courses. So that our courses are the ones that end up matching Citrus College courses. The deans of Citrus College get involved. They look at the courses that we are offering. They change it around to make sure to matches what they're doing. If students pass the course, including and of course exams portfolios. They not only get credit for what they accomplish here at high school, but then they also carry those credits to. The college credit over at Citrus College. What that does is, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at middle skills and high skills jobs. The middle skills jobs require some sort of additional coursework beyond high school. So they can take that coursework that they've already learned in high school and apply it towards college and moving on to any other career path that you choose to follow. That number of ninety-six increased from fifty-four the year before. So twenty twenty-three, we had ninety-six students. And then a year before that, we have fifty-four. So it was a seventy-eight percent increase. Keeping in mind, this is above and beyond the students who are receiving dual credit for our due enrollment slash ECP classes. Okay? And finally, we want to talk a little bit about our branding and marketing. You see some of the posters there. You see some of the brochures, you see the logo that Patricia was talking about. And there's many things that we will have in addition to it, banners and whatnot. And Patricia, I don't know if you want to speak more about that or?
I think that with the CTE logo. We, some of the things we get out of our conferences that we go to, right? Was that it was really important to have a logo that everybody recognizes. So we're hoping that with some of these. Marketing, the branding that we do, that it's really well recognized in in the district and in the community, really.
Yes. So we actually contracted a professional graphic designing firm as well as a printing company to ensure that everything is top notch. We want to make sure that our students can take pride in what they see day in and day out. And that our teachers, when they wear their shirts or when they pass out the brochures, they see as professional. And even more so that the community understands that we take this part of our pathways very seriously. So when we do our branding and marketing, it has to be something top of, you know, of top priority. And lastly. For the last five years, for the previous five years, Azusa Unified, along with the Fido Consortium. Through grants, we have been awarded over eight point three million dollars. And of that eight point three million, four million of that was entirely to Azusa Unified. So we work hard to ensure that not just through LCAP funding, but we also want to apply for grants so we can fully support our programs. I try never to say no to anybody who's asking for something because I feel that when they ask is something that they feel is critical in their classroom. So we want to be able to support them by giving them what they need. And so we have in our classrooms, all the updated materials, equipment, etc. To ensure that they are aligned to what the industry standards are. So that when they go out into the industry, they're not learning something new with a new equipment or new supplies or whatever they. They have, they are learning with what is out there in the industry. Anybody after that? Okay. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a few questions. So I know you mentioned that the, you look at the job market. For resources because you eliminated some of the courses. So what about when you to bring new courses in? Do you do the same thing or? Because I was thinking, have we thought about having like trades like welding or? I mean, is that big in market, right? That's, that's what you look, look for. Or, you know, electrician, construction jobs, because those are very high jobs for students. So I had the opportunity today to do a podcast with the multimedia students and I'm not, I. You know, they're like, yo, I know I'm coming to a podcast. I'm like, okay. So I didn't know they're guys, but these young ladies are really. Articulate, very smart young ladies. I was so proud of them and they want to go into film. When they, they're, they were juniors at Azusa High. And I was talking to them about, we were talking about, you know, careers and so forth. And they were happy to be in their class. The equipment's beautiful. Very nice. So anyways, that's my question. I was wondering about the trades that we have, have we thought of putting any trades into our schools?
Yes, in fact, when you mentioned that, that is one of the priority sectors that forecasting three to five years is a major area that needs development. And a major job market is advanced, advanced manufacturing. So when we consolidated schools, one of the things that we we needed to is to ensure that all of the students had a pathway that they can go into. And that it also matched the number of teachers that we had. And moving forward, we are constantly, like I mentioned earlier, annually, we are looking at our pathways. The students who are participating, who are completing, making sure that our students are actually still interested in these pathways before we introduce another one. We just don't want to. For lack of a better term, cannibalize one pathway for the other. So we want to make sure that pathways are built out to its entirety. Students are working through the continuum of work-based learning, they're getting certifications. And then we look to see, okay, can we add on another pathway? Maybe one is not as popular as we had thought. Even though the job market is out there, maybe the students are not interested in it. So we always look from three to five years and try to map things out. Because when you bring one in, you really need to ensure that it has a five-year lifespan. And so that means a lot of dedication of resources, equipment, etc. And, and making sure that that can last long term.
So you also look at enrollment.
Yes.
Right? Because if I recall, the medical pathway at Gotham High School. It's huge now. So, you know, is it in the five-year span? Because sometimes that, you know, you just, because you start a course. Something is not always full, but as kids start knowing about it and they want to start doing welding or electrical or what have you. You know, the class will get full in time. So how do you, how would you determine that? I mean, based on enrollment?
Well, that's a tricky thing because the students come in based on the availability of us out there and they choose. During course selection time, usually sometime early spring, late winter, they come in and choose based on the options that we can present. But then if we have an idea that we do want to move in another direction, we do surveys. We ask students, when we brought on fire technology, when we brought on the emergency medical student and services. It was actually student surveys that actually prompted us to consider, okay, is this something we want to move forward with? So we look at also administration to see if there's something to support. We look at the facilities to see if something we can build on, all of that. So something like a manufacturing, we've been considering this for a while, but it takes a massive facilities overhaul. And it also takes a lot of equipment that is very expensive. So we have to weigh then long-term costs and. All of these things are factors in the determining.
So are you familiar with the, the trade center they have in Azusa and Sierra Mother?
I am not, no.
I'll take you there.
All right, let's go.
They're looking for students, you know, and maybe they can be helpful to us also. I've been there before. And, and I know it's a rain in the corner in Sierra Mother, you have to go way in, in there that. A gentleman took me there from another board member and I think we need to visit that.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I also appreciate your involvement. You hopped on one of their advisory meetings one day. Yeah. So we were having an advisory and then out in the window, there was. Patricia wanted to say something.
So you wanted, just so you know, actually today and last Tuesday, we took IT and engineering students. On two field trips that this money allows us to do there. It's so expensive to go on a field trip. But it's so necessary just from what, like what you said. So they were to manufacturing plants, to local manufacturing prep plants. One is Chirp Solar Works. It's actually a nonprofit. That has developed a new system for solar panels. And the other one is Dauntless Moles. And that's in Covina. So they really talk to the students about trades and what different things, welding and things like that. That's in our automotive program and in our, in our engineering, electrical, they learn about circuits, they learn about those things. So I'm hoping that, I mean, even though we don't have a pathway into those trades. They do have some skills embedded in some of our programs already. And we are exposing the kids to some of the manufacturing.
Snyder, has the students go to Snyder?
Sidners, yeah, they, they, yeah, he's, he's the one that's teaching them, you know, the, the welding and things like that. So they do have, they are getting some of those skills in our classes and they are being exposed to our, the city of industry has so much manufacturing. So we are, you know, exposing the students to that.
The distance is close to Azusa, so I think I'm going to go there. Thank you.
Mr. Chang, I imagine that that meeting probably wasn't going so well until Board Member Rodriguez Pena hopped on. And then. Right, the whole meeting sunshine.
Right?
Sunshine all over. It was a dreary day. Thank you. No, I, I had a, I had a question regarding, you use the, use the phrase. Phasing out that, that some of the pathways are phased, being phased out. Can you talk to what is that process? If I am a, if I'm a student and I'm in a pathway that's being phased out, what, what does that mean for me? Well, all of our pathways have a two-year. Completion in which they take one year of concentrator and then one year of capstone. There's one pathway that has actually multiple capstones, but that wasn't the one phased out. That's the health career pathway. So what we do is if a student has started the pathway, we want to give them the opportunity to complete it. So if they, they started the first year of their concentrator, we keep the capstone course or the advanced course the following year. But we just don't offer any more concentrated courses or the first year courses the following year. So that's what we mean by phasing out.
First of all, I would like to thank you guys for your presentation. It brings great joy.
It brings great joy to to see that we offer, you know, these type of CTE courses for our students. One thing I did not see on your slide and I would like to ask is, what is what is the percentage rate of the students that actually are connected to a job and career after receiving um their CTA pathway certificate?
Um, when you say connecting, so I will, I'll try to look for the data and try to get to that. When you say connecting, um, is there something in particular that you're looking for?
Just do do they have a job? Um, that, you know, so they're they're putting time and effort into uh getting these, getting this done. It's great that we now in Azusa Unified are able to provide this. But what is the percentage rate that in the sense that these are connected to a actual like job? Are there opportunities? We have a lot of um uh places where where they go and they do their internships. But out of those internships, what is the percentage rate of of uh the hiring? Right? How many have jobs? Um, some of them may not go to high college, right? They're choosing this as their career. And so I I would like to know what it, what is the percentage of the jobs that our students are being um recruited for? Since we do have all these partnerships, which is great, but how many of these companies actually hire our kids?
Yeah, they do get offered job opportunities. Um, some of them go on to four-year colleges and so they don't accept per se. But um we can look at the firm numbers and try to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I want to say thank you for your presentation tonight. Um, it was very intriguing, actually. Um, it kind of reminded me of my school days. But um, I wanted to ask on the partnerships, is that um, is that something that you're can, the staff is continuously working on is developing more partnerships to grow the program? Um, is that outreach happening on a monthly basis? Can you just elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sure, the the outreach is happening daily. Um, part of what I do, part of what Patricia does, part of what teachers do during advisory, when they go out, um when students go out on field trips, we're constantly trying to connect with business partners. Um, so when we talk about these business partners, they have formal M U's with our district, um that that carries a liability from their part. Um, some small businesses can't handle the liability because we're sending our students over there and they don't have, let's say, the insurance to cover that liability. Bigger corporations are willing to um so that they can cover. But that doesn't mean just because they're not on their list, that is part of the internship list, that we aren't working with other um community members to offer. Um, let's say just a um basic walkthrough or a job shadow or a basic field trip to visit their facilities, things like that. So um to, in response to your question, it's daily. We are daily networking, daily working with um people to see if we can connect with partners willing to give our students an opportunity.
Is um, I mean, I would love to see the program grow further is, do any of those connections? Is there, um, I kind of envision maybe, is there a partnership with the co- with the uh Azusa Chamber right now? So that because they're connected to the business community, especially the industrial sector and things like um Board Member Penya was saying regarding manufacturing or different trades? Is that is that partnership in existence now?
Yeah, we worked with Mr. Castro. We also um have job opportunities. It wasn't necessarily an internship because actually a job opportunity that was posted for our students from um Azusa Parks and Rec, in which we have students actually apply for jobs um to in that area. But it wasn't considered an internship, so it wasn't listed as an internship partner.
Are you working with the with Mr. Castro on connecting to new businesses to maybe embrace new new internship programs here with the Zusa businesses?
Yeah, we, San Gabriel Economic Valley Partnership is one of the key partners that um supports what we do. Uh, we contract with them and from that relationship, we also build from not just Azusa Chamber of Commerce, but all chambers of commerce within our consortium as well as who they touch. So yes, we we work with Mr. Castro, we work with other chambers of commerce, and we also work with um San Gabriel Economic Partnership. They have over one hundred industry or partners uh within their group, uh and many of them are part of what we do as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chang. Ms. Dorsey, we appreciate your presentation.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes.
Uh, because when you mentioned Mr. Castro, so do we still have a job shadowing still? We still have job shadow, would they go to businesses and right?
Yeah, we had.
In the mayor's seat or the whomever in right business?
We had a job shadow day um pre-pandemic. Um, now we have more specialized, uh we'll take students and in groups um instead of the entire job shadow. Yeah.
Oh, it's just different. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving to moving to item thirteen point one, approval of ten in agreement between AUSD and Azusa Educators Association. This is an action item. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? At this time, I would like to abstain from this vote. Thank you. Ms. Hernandez, your student preferential vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, uh Board Member Arianas, uh Board Members. I'll call for the vote. I apologize, my, maybe I need to reset on my computer because I cannot vote online. Oh, I am in. Oh, never mind. And the item passes for yes to one abstention. Moving on to item thirteen point two, this is an action item regarding the school attendance calendars for this school year and next. May I have a motion? Motion to thirteen point two? And is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Hernandez, your student preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Board Members. And the item is unanimously. Now we move on to item fourteen point one, ring on top-notch steam academy charter petition. We will now convene this public hearing for the top-notch steam academy charter petition. Mr. Ottega, I turn this over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Bo. Uh, the Azusa Unified School District uh received a charter petition uh to establish the top-notch Steam Academy. A copy of the required signed certification deeming the petition to be complete was received by the district on October fourth, twenty twenty-three. At that time, the district commenced the applicable timelines for the petition review process. The purpose of this meeting, I'm sorry, the most public hearing tonight is to determine the level of support for the petition by district teachers, other district employees, guardians and community members. This matter will then come back to the Board of Education for final action at our December ninth Board of Education meeting. The petitioners for top-notch Steam Academy will first have an opportunity to make a presentation to the Board of Education regarding their petition and will receive a maximum of ten minutes. I would like, I would now like to invite the petitioners to come forward to the uh to make their petition.
Uh, so what do I can uh for the people who want to see? Thank you. Okay, good evening. Honorable Azusa Board of Education, President Dr. Bo, honorable board members, Ms. Benavides, Ms. Rodriguez Pena, and Ms. uh Ari Lanas and Mr. Grillo, honorable, honorable Superintendent Mr. Ottega and parents of Azusa Unified School District and teachers and a company, a community member of Azusa City. My name is Christina Su. I'm the lead petitioner of top-notch Steam Academy Charter Petition. I'm here tonight to support, with the support from Azusa, residents and parents of top-notch Steam Academy Board Members, Mrs. Jim Chan, Ms. Teresa Lee, Dr. Mary Wong, to present in front of board about top-notch Steam Academy Charter School Petition. Dr. Louis Huang is also the TNSA Board Member, but she could not attend tonight's meeting due to the schedule conflicts with her other meeting. We are the founding team for top-notch Steam Academy. We represent over two hundred families excited to bring a new school to Azusa community. Okay, um, the third slide, please. Okay, I would like to begin the presentation with my personal story. My parents left Taiwan and came to United States forty years ago for a better future for their family. Unlike their educational experience where a single academic test determined their destinies in most Asian countries, they want their children to have a freedom, opportunity and choice to determine their future. Like many other new immigrant family, pursuing the American dream comes at a high cost. My parents sacrificed everything to provide my brothers and me with the best school they could afford. However, when I was enrolling in a public school, no one looked or sounded like me, and I was always an outsider looking in. My parents pushed me hard to and provide the unwavering support. They gave me the power to believe in myself and my own ability to achieve an American dream. I became a teacher because I want to help all immigrant families and help their children to do well in school. The founding team and I have the same goal. We realize it is important to have a school filled with diversity and accepting that being different in is cool. We want to have a place where all children, whoever feel like they were outsiders, looking in, have a safe place they belong. A school with diversity and using two languages to learn the rigorous academic contents. Slide number four, please. Top-notch Steam Academy is a tuition-free public TK to eighth-grade charter school. Study to open in August twenty twenty-four in Azusa, California. Top-notch will provide Mandarin Chinese dual-language immersion and steam project-based learning. Student will develop English and Mandarin Chinese through focused study in steam. And we want to develop leaders who will apply cultural competency, empathy, and an inquiry-centered approach to solving problem and learning for the purpose of of creating positive change in their community and global society. Why have immer- immersion language program become increasing comment in community across the United States? There are several reasons. Study has revealed that multilingual C boost brain function, and there is a crucial short window of time among younger children to learn a new language. And lastly, students with proficiency in more than one language demonstrate ease of developing and practicing competency in building in in intercultural uh social connection and awareness. We believe that a school like Top-notch will not just provide a general and well-researched benefits of attending a master of a second language. In addition, focusing on Mandarin Chinese will provide students who enroll with a foundation of a lifelong career opportunity with the potential to improve the effectively participate in relation with China. The American and Chinese has more than a hundred and ten billions trades and services between these two countries. Meanwhile, US-China economic activity continue to grow as the relationship between two countries become more complex and tense, giving the benefits of creativity, empathy, active listening, memory and concentration. How might relation between the two country differ if more American diplomats spoke Mandarin Chinese? What's the power of a dual-language immersion program? The potential is greater peace, collaboration and prosperity on a global scale. We are deliberately proposing a charter that fuse a steam thematic focus of study with English Mandarin dual-language immersion. The vision for the school is to create a future where students have not just a foundation in steam skill and knowledge, but also a solid-based language skill to convey complex idea of science and technology in more than one language. In a one real world example, that highlights the importance of fulfilling our vision is the work of Taiwanese semiconductor manufacturing company, TSMC. In Arizona, TSMC is building two factories, a project of forty billion dollars with twenty-one thousand jobs for US citizens and the most advanced semiconductor processing technology in the United States. This project are crucial for increasing the supply for or more advanced chip and support the output of hardware like appliances and the software like artificial intelligence, including cell phone, aircraft, computers and more. To make this happen, the company is hiring engineers from all over the world because the United States recruitment pool was insufficient in requisite skills. For example, as a result, six hundred engineers were rec- of uh brought over from Taiwan to work on the project in Phoenix. At the same time, some of the international workforce had to be trained in Taiwan for twelve to fifteen months before the participating in the international workforce. Uh, before participating in the project. For such training, it would be invaluable for teammates to have a strong foundation in Mandarin Chinese and especially foreign language proficiency in steam concept and terms. Census data reveal that Azusa has an overall population of forty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-four residents, including sixty-three of Hispanic Latinos, seventy percent white, fifteen percent Asian and three percent black or African American. However, there are seventy-three percent of students enroll in Azusa Unified School District. Uh, we are identified as Latino, twelve percent white, eleven, um, sorry, the the uh children that live in Azusa, uh seventy percent of Latino and twelve percent white, eleven percent Asian and three percent black or African. But the true uh number of the Asian Asian students who are enrolled in Azusa Unified School District is only one point six percent. So in the summer of twenty twenty-three, Top-notch Steam Academy tests and introduced components of the proposed um the charter school design in Azusa City at a pop-up school for at least six weeks and where eighty-one students were enrolled. We discover a strong demand for Top-notch Steam Academy during the program, especially among the Asian fam- American family. There are fifty-one out of eighty-three students who enroll in this program, identify themselves as Asian. Moreover, among the family that took the summer program survey, eighty-five percent said that if Top-notch were approved to launch and open and operate in Azusa, they would enroll in the school. Further, Top-notch Steam Academy received three hundred sixty-four signature of the community members who support Top-notch to build its charter school. And one hundred eighty-nine parents submit the intent to enroll form for their children to enroll at Top-notch during the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We believe that given the enrollment attendance and opinion data from family, the approval and launch of TNSA would draw a sizable portion of Asian residents to enroll or re-enroll in the uh local pa- us, uh public school system. The demand is clear. But based on the research of existing public school program with Azusa Unified, the top-notch founding team knows that there are already three Spanish dual-language immersion program in the school district, but none are currently offered for Mandarin Chinese. Further, the approval and launch of Top-notch will benefit students generally and those who might be identified as an English learner. Research on English learner enroll in dual-language immersion school shows greater success, including better academics' progress, English proficiency and self-confidence and worth. Next slide, please. Top-notch seeks the partner with uh Azusa Unified School District, tackle a set of unmet opportunity and needs for the city. Going the number of a Mandarin Chinese speakers in the community. Going the number of Mandarin Chinese speakers in the community, equipping them with deep knowledge and practical skill in the steam field, enhancing students' growth based on the benefits that come from participation in dual-language immersion, set up students for potential career in the ever-growing steam occupation in the United States, and also draw more Asian family.
Hi, hi, Ms. Su, that is your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. The board will now receive in input on the petition. Individual speakers shall be allotted three minutes to address the board. Uh, for those members of the public who prefer or require translation into Spanish or Mandarin, you will be allotted allotted six minutes for your public comment. So we'll begin with Nancy Sharma. For Nancy Sharma for a public comment. And just so that we are all on the same page, that timer for public comment speakers is here um in red. Thank you.
Respected Board Members, I just wanted to tell you about my concerns with charter schools. First of all, charter schools have been known to be more flexible with smaller classes with far class size than public schools. However, the debate on whether charter schools should open in this community has to see both sides, including both the benefits and negatives. Though they offer social skills and confidence, charter schools also have the reputation of being racially discriminating towards both students and families. Though I feel this won't be a problem in our district, it may offset the reputation. They also have very little support and aid for special needs students. Imagine having a child rejected from joining a school because of their race or inability to meet the charter school requirements. Because charter schools may fail to teach children who are visually impaired, deaf, autistic, et cetera. They will be excluded. It's the twenty-first century. I don't think that this is where we want to end up. Instead of inclusivity, thanks to modern times, it appears they are going backwards. Thank you for listening and have a good evening.
Next, we have Andrew Se.
Is working? Uh, good evening. I'm Andy C. I've been a resident of Azusa for over ten years now, and my students, uh, my children are currently in Azusa High School. I'm here to voice my concerns in regards to the charter school petition. Azusa's faced many adversities over the last five years, including the pandemic, economic downturn, closure of schools driven by declining enrollment and increasing socioeconomic disparities. With all these challenges, I request the board to review the topic of the charter school through the lens of the Azusa Unified Vision and Mission Statement, specifically focusing on three goals: student learning, fiscal responsibility, community engagement. From a standpoint of student learning, data from NAEP shows that there is no statistical difference in reading and math in fourth, eighth, and twelfth grade comparing public school to charter schools. From a fiscal responsibility standpoint, data from NPE, the Network of Public Education, shows that the charter school has a fifty percent failure rate within the first fifteen years and twenty-five percent failure rate within five years. Azusa just closed five schools driven by declining enrollment and inability to absorb the fixed and variable overhead cost. By introducing a charter school into Azusa, this will create the problem that we just resolved. If the rebuttal of this is that the charter school's intention is to entice students from neighboring communities, then this will be in conflict with the goal of community engagement. Pulling in students from surrounding cities and siphoning or cherry-picking students from our current public school, you will be taking resources from students who are resident. Uh, you'll be taking resources from students who are resident of Azusa. A publicly funded charter school that behaves as a privately-run school while targeting a specific demographic does not promote a sense of inclusion and potentially drive further socioeconomic disparities. The petition should be denied in pursuant of legislation AB fifteen oh five, section seven and eight, stating the charter, the charter school is unlikely to serve the interests of the entire community in which the school is proposing to locate. And the school district is not positioned to absorb the fiscal impact of the proposed charter school. Lastly, I would like to state educating our student is a moral and societal obligation and should not be treated as a for-profit venture. To best serve our interests of the community and our students, I advise the board to vote against the charter school. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Andrew Klaeger. And Mr. Ranko, do we have issues with our timer getting reset? Mr. Klaeger, thank you.
Dear members of the board, I'm here on behalf of my students, their families, and the larger community of Azusa to request that you reject this petition for a charter school. The Top Notch Steam Academy is trying to mislead you and the citizens of Azusa. First, the Top Notch Steam Academy has several hidden connections to multiple education groups and defunct schools, suggesting a history of failure from this organization. For example, the Top Notch Steam Academy's official Instagram says that they are, quote, formerly known as Optimist Steam, which connects us to their first attempt at a school with Optimist Steam Academy. On their website, which has been mysteriously deleted, it explicitly states that um, Optimist Steam Academy is, quote, "part of the Confucius Chinese Language School of Walmart and Walmart, Walnut and Diamond Bar", yet another school that they're associated with. This heavily implies that the Top Notch Steam Academy is simply an extension of this Confucius Chinese Language School. Furthermore, Mr. Jim Chen, whose name you see on your presentation tonight, is one of the directors of this Confucius Chinese Language School, as his name appears on their latest tax filings. This is not transparency, this is deception. In regards to quality, Ms. Su calls herself principal of the Mioho Chinese School. Look on your sheets. As an example of her expertise, yet on public record, she listed herself as director, one of the three business owners of a school, if you can call it that. This school closed in twenty fourteen, yet she shows you tonight that she had not earned her administrative credential until fall twenty twenty-three, a term which is not even finished. How can you be a principal of a school without credentials? Simple. And parents, listen up. As a charter school, you don't actually need proof that you know what you're doing. That's why during their last attempt at this, they searched for employees on Facebook, looking for, quote, "camp counselors in high school and college level", proving that you don't need credentials to work for them, and that was with their Optimist Steam Academy. Camp counselors, you may wonder, yes, Top Notch Steam Academy is literally was and is a glorified summer camp, and their only experience, other than the past failures that I discussed, Optimist, Mioho Chinese School, the two other associated groups with Ms. Su, Superior Education, and our most recent attempt, Top Notch Educational Group. And I wonder what else we'll find. This is not quality education, this is insulting. However, their biggest insult tonight is when they say that we need them because of, quote, "demographic and performance data of the surrounding schools" and the, quote, "unmet educational needs of Azusa. Don't you get it? They're accusing you of not meeting our students' educational needs, as if this summer camp could do the job of a real school without their own performance data to back them up. Your job as elected officials is to meet the educational needs of this city, and by allowing an outside charter school to do your job for you, you announce to the city that you are outsourcing the work that the people elected you to do. That is an insult to every educator, student, and parent in this district. Thank you.
Next, we have Cindy Crawford.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Again, they're accusing you of not meeting our students' educational needs. Your job as elected officials is to meet educational needs of this city, and by allowing an outside charter school to do your job for you, you announce to the city that you are outsourcing the work that the people elected you to do. And that is an insult to every educator, student, and parent in this district. Ms. Benavides, you call yourself on your website, and I'm sure most of you would also describe yourself as this, as a, quote, "an advocate for transparency, quality education, and putting students first." Do you see any of those qualities here tonight? Do any of you see those qualities here tonight? I don't. They don't. Your constituents don't. And we don't need to be a testing ground for another of Ms. Su's failed attempts to run her academies, and our kids are not her lab rats to test her theories. That seal behind you, please go ahead and take a look at it. It says excellent and excellence in education. Prove to Azusa that you still believe in those words. Reject this charter school, reject this sham of a school, reject Top Notch Steam Academy. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Next, we have Meg Savela.
Good evening, Board. Esteemed colleagues, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you once again. This is the third time I will be speaking to you regarding our opposition as a union to the charter school petition here tonight. I don't need to repeat myself about the negative consequences. You've heard some of them already. You've heard the concerns of your constituents and your employees. You've read our resolution that we wrote with CSEA to ask you to please not accept the petition, but to deny it. I would like to reiterate one thing, though, that I feel is extremely important. And that is coming from the document that was passed out by, and I'm, please forgive me for not remembering your name, I'm sorry. Um, and I believe that you have received this as well. If you look on the back page, it talks about the number of students that this Top Notch Academy will serve. And it says that in the first year, they're looking at two hundred and fifty students. Taking two hundred and fifty of our students equates to seven to ten classrooms. That's seven to ten jobs for teachers, seven to ten jobs for classified. That's only in the classroom assistance. It doesn't count those nutrition services workers, custodians, clerks, maybe even a principal. It says that after five years, they will be servicing seven hundred students. Seven hundred students will equate to twenty to twenty-eight classrooms, which is two elementary schools or potentially half of one of our mega middle school or mega high school. We just closed too many schools. And we will have to close more. That is just a consequence. And I, I believe that you all are here to serve our children, our community, and to also look out for your employees and the interests fiscally, the fiscal solvency of our district. And approving a charter school is not looking out for the fiscal solvency of our district. It's not going to protect our community from having to close more schools, and it's not going to protect us from losing jobs. And so I implore you on behalf of your labor partners, and that's what you call us all the time, your labor partners, to reject this petition. Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Ray.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Ortega, and Cabinet, and attendees. As a community member, district employee, and president of CSEA Azusa Chapter two nine nine, I am here tonight to speak about the board's upcoming decision on the charter school petition from Top Notch Academy. There are some communities where a charter may be an asset to the district, but not here in Azusa Unified. We are still adjusting to the closing of the schools, reorganization, and layoffs, along with declining enrollment. Although some of the students with an interest in attending Top Notch are from outside of Azusa, there are some within our district boundaries, and there is potential for Top Notch to cherry-pick our students from our district. Nonetheless, a charter school in Azusa will lead to a loss of millions of dollars for our district and the closing of more of our public schools in the future. As Azusa USD Board Members, you were elected to serve the whole community and do what is best for our public schools. Allowing a charter school in our district is not in the best interest of our community or our schools. I urge you to please vote no on allowing Top Notch Academy into our district. Thank you.
Next, we have Dwayne Russell.
Good evening, Superintendent Ortega, President Bo, Board Members, and Executive Cabinet. My name is Dwayne Russell, and I'm here because of my concerns regarding the approval of this charter school in Azusa. I'm an Azusa resident and a career educator with thirty-nine years of service. I am currently a director in the local school district, and ten of my years I served as a high school principal. This district is at a crossroads with the closing of several schools, including a high school. A school, a school district, and a city are only as strong as their people. This charter school is not the answer. It divides the community. This board has made some difficult and unpopular decisions. Now is your time to make the right decision. I live in Rosedale, and it's disheartening when I speak with families who have children and tell me that their children go to schools in Glendora and Arcadia. During COVID, when yard signs were very popular announcing a current high school graduate, I saw only one sign that said Azusa High School on it. I saw numerous signs that said Glendora, Arcadia, and private schools. And believe it or not, I even saw one sign from the high school I graduated from, Northview. In closing, I want to state that I have great fondness for this school district as I started my professional careers as an educator, as a special aide at Murray, Valleydale, and Sierra High School. Now is time for this board to rally around our administrators, our teachers, parents, and most importantly, our students. I want to remind this board that they represent every student in this school district and not just a select few who do not believe in this school district. Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Wong.
Hello, Board Members. I'm a professor and a teacher educator at Azusa Pacific University. Tonight I had a class I was teaching called Intercultural Communication and Language Teaching. I had at least four of my students who are from Taiwan and China. I told them about the possibilities of this school, and they were so excited to possibly contribute to it. One of my students is from India. In her homework for this week, she said the following. I thought I can't say it any better, so let me read it to you. She said knowing different languages not only opens up communication, but also provides a deeper understanding of the diverse global perspectives, aiding in cross-cultural interaction and fostering a more inclusive worldview. In essence, language is not just a means of communication. It's a window into different worldviews and cultural perspectives. Learning and understanding different languages enriches our perception and understanding of life, broadening our horizons and fostering a deeper appreciation of diverse cultures and way of life. I'm a three-time Fulbright scholar, and I'm on the board of the Greater Los Angeles Fulbright Chapter. Um, so I can attest to the value of knowing many languages. In fact, I taught Chinese at Azusa Pacific University not long ago. Um, my husband's from Burma, my son-in-law is from India. So I hear different languages around me all the time and can attest to the value of them. Do you know, um, there are eight billion people in the world? Do you know how many languages there are in the world? Seven thousand. If you can speak English and you can speak Chinese, you can speak to about one-third of the world's population, even though there's seven thousand languages. So it's a very important endeavor to consider the importance of allowing students to learn Chinese as well as English. You know, I, um, I got two six-figure grants from the Hong Kong Bureau of Education. And over three years, I was asked to evaluate all the primary and secondary schools And over three years I was asked to evaluate all the primary and secondary schools in Hong Kong. One of the findings that you'll see in the reports is that Chinese parents value education above everything else and they did anything to move their children to schools in which they were sure that they could become multilingual bilingual speakers of both, well, actually Mandarin Cantonese and English in Hong Kong. I, I am confident that we'll find the same here in and around Azusa, and I look forward to finding ways for many of our multilingual graduate TESL students at Azusa to come and help them become possible. Thank you.
Next we have Daniel Lee. Next we have Daniel Lee.
Hi, board member and cabinet member. My name is Daniel Lee. I'm from Icon School Management. I'm the CEO at the Icon School Management. I'm here to just point out some budget key point. We're helping the Top Notch, the Steam Academy to build the five-year projection in the budget petition, petition budget. And then I want to just, I mean, just all the detail in the petition that I want to go over some key point that we understand the, the, in generally what we've done in the budget. The, as you know, the school is funded, most of funding based on the ADA. As the presentation in the handout that you can see that the school is going to start with a two hundred and fifty student. As of now that we have a hundred eighty-nine, the parent's enrollment form is being signed. And so we are very good faced that I'm pretty sure that we can reach out to two hundred and fifty enrollment as of the, before the school started two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. And school projecting it adding about hundred twenty-five students every year, and then we're going to max out the seven hundred students in the year five. That's the out budget projection, the normal projection. As you know, that many, the majority revenue resources from the local control funding formula that we're going to use in the latest version is, I think, the version of twenty-four point one A, the FING MAC LCF calculator. And beside of the, the LCF revenue that we considering have the, a little bit tighter funding based on the duplicate county sixty percent we estimated and then other state revenue. A budget built very conservatively. I mean, we didn't count any local revenue that we assumed that we're going to have a lot of donation that we, we didn't include. It just included twenty thousand a year for out years, every year for five years. I believe that we can, once the charter approved, that we can apply for the charter school grant program is a title fiber money at the start of grants. And then we're not including the budget because that grant is not eligible to apply till charter approved by the school district. So budgets build revenues very conservatively. Expense side of it, as you know, the salary and benefit the mostly, the, the big portion of the expenditure. Our average salary and benefit for employees ninety-one thousand dollars in first year. And then after five years is going to be reach out to more than hundred thousand dollars. So we actually have a very competitive salary compensation in the charter school in the community. And so we can hire the go qualified teachers serving better education in the charter school. The charter is the two items, the academy and financially. My background is I was an auditor for school district and charter school auditor for twelve years before getting my own back office provider. Thank you so much.
Next we have Marcella Cardenas. Next we have Marcella Cardenas. Is Ms. Cardenas outside? Thank you.
Hello, hi, my name is Marcella Cardenas and I'm just gonna talk about my son did the STEM Summer Camp this past summer. And I just kind of want to talk about his experience as a whole. My son is a English Spanish speaking child and he was so excited to, when we found this program because he's so interested in other cultures and learning other languages. And he did, I believe it was, I'm losing my thought now, but I think it was a six-week program and he had an absolute blast. So I, my whole family fully supports this charter school and what they believe in in their mission. Because I saw it firsthand with my son and just like the amount of like thoughts that it opened up for him and the possibilities of what he wanted to do. Like every day after he came home and he's like, oh, mom, can we look into this or mom, can we look into that? And it was just a really great opening of his horizons, I should say. But yeah, thank you.
Next we have Marcel Mitri. And because we are broadcasting live, I would ask if our speakers can speak into the microphone.
Hi, my name is Samantha Cho and I am speaking on behalf of Marshall. He was unable to make it tonight. I am here with Dan from Icon Management and again, I'm just speaking on behalf of Marshall. So here I do have a transcript that he sent over, so I'll just read it to everyone. To Azusa Board of Education, I wanted to inform you that I support top notch steam academy getting approval to establish a charter school in Azusa. This past summer I was in search for a summer school that can be educational and affordable. And then I came across top notch on a Facebook post. I communicated with the director, Ms. Xu, who informed me of the children's curriculum and the safe environment the school will be held at, which was Azusa Pacific University. Ms. Xu was gracious enough to understand family's financial situation and offered the summer school as donating the best they can to help the fun, to help fund the summer school program, which was appreciated. The school curriculum was unprecedented because my children ages seven and nine were amazed at the many robotic projects they worked on and how they learned Mandarin. They came home and explained all the fascinating operating projects they put together and the families had an opportunity to view them at the end of the session. From start to finish, the interaction with the teachers were so kind, organized and respectful to myself and my children. My children enjoyed working with every international teacher as they helped my children learn and explore the world of robotics. We definitely feel privileged to have experienced top notch steam academy and hope this board gives the opportunity to have a charter school open in Azusa to teach the community children the many aspects of science, math and a dual language. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Marshall Mitri. Thank you.
Next we have Yajun Wang. Next we have Yajun Wang.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yaru Wang. I'm a Azusa resident since two thousand twenty-eight. And I have two kids. Yeah. Yeah, twenty. Okay. I have two kids and I'm here in support of top notch STEM Academy. I want this school open in our community because we are bilingual at home. And right now we speak in Chinese at home and then we would like our child continue to learn in the school setting. And because we believe that environment is very important for learning another language. For us, knowing how to speak Chinese is not just only the communication skill that we would like for our children to have. And also I think that's the connection with our family back in Taiwan and then also that allow them to have the tool to know another culture. We know there are a lot of population in this, there are a lot of populations be Mandarin. So if he can have both language, I think that will be really helpful. And right now my kids are in preschool, so we are looking for like the school where we're gonna send him once he turn five. However, like before we move into this community, we have no idea the rating. So we're kind of anxious and hesitant to send our kids to Azusa School District just because of the rating. And we know a lot of people that in this community, they either send kids to private school or like do school transfer. But we, like so far, I really like Azusa at the city, so I really hope we can stay here. So when I heard that the school, like this school, that there's a one dual immersion school gonna open in this, in this city, I was really, really excited. So I asked the board to approve the petition. Okay, thank you.
Next we have, next we have Shinru Tan. Next we have Shinru Tan.
Hello, everyone. I need the translation. Help me.
Okay, um, if we can set our timer for six minutes. We're allowing six minutes for bilingual presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so good evening. My name is Xinru. I live in Delta Avenue in Azusa. So today I'm here to support top notch academy to open because this is important to both of my kids. So I'm a new immigrant to America. English is not very good, so we use mainly Chinese in home. So right now for my children, they both speak Chinese and their English is not, not that fluent. Okay, so I sent my kid to a preschool. It's primarily only English. However, my child has hard time to adjust school just because of the barrier, the language barrier. So he was like crying all day and then it's very difficult for him. And, and they are trying to find a bilingual preschool. So they actually found a school in Diamond Bar, so it's kind of pretty far. But she said it's all worth it because now like his kids are happy when going to school and very happy like overall. So I really hope this school can open, so I can send our kids just within this school district. I don't need to drive too far. We can save money and save time. So I believe language is a tool, so I would, I want my child to have another language. So he has more, he, he can be more advanced. So when I look into the correct curriculum of the school and they focus on science, arts, math, and it's very suitable to my child's personality. So I can already envision how they are gonna enjoy school if this school open. Um, I also know a lot of family, like Asian family in Azusa. They actually want to be here today, but they need to take care of kids. So they will, I would like to speak to them, like they also support this school to open. And thank you for everybody's time.
Next we have Kit Sai. Next we have Kit Sai. We can come back. The next person we have is Yichang. Yichang. Mr. Ortega, is there an overflow room where these members of the public might be gathering?
No ma'am, nobody showed up to the overflow room.
Okay. All right, next we have Greta Proctor. Greta Proctor is online. Okay, then we'll begin with Greta Proctor.
Good evening, board members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Greta Proctor. I serve as legal counsel for top notch steam academy. It is my pleasure to speak in support of this petitioner who is proposing to bring a dual language immersion steam education in Mandarin Chinese and English for TK eighth grade students in the Azusa community. There is currently no similar English Mandarin dual language program in the district. And this new TK eight charter would bring new residents who have left the district back into the local public system. The dual language immersion program, which was originally piloted in the community as a successful summer camp, an indicator of success and thoughtful progress for the program and not a negative. The top notch steam academy charter petition more than meets the legal standard for approval, including the new requirements in AB fifteen oh five and demonstrating that it will meet the needs of the entire community and providing opportunities that do not currently exist in the district. The charter presents a sound educational program. The petitioners are demonstrably likely to successfully implement the program described in the petition. The petition contains all of the required legal affirmations. And the charter contains more than reasonably comprehensive descriptions of all of the legal elements. I wish to express my strong support for the approval of this charter petition and I'm happy to answer any questions from a legal perspective. Thank you so much.
Next we have online Amber Fish.
Hello, thank you all for taking the time out to let us speak tonight. Wanted to make a comment that I don't think it's just Chinese parents that are, that value education. I think it's all parents that value education. You saw with our school redistricting, parents came out in force to ask you guys not to close down a school to make sure we didn't lose programs to to show up. Our community shows up. We have a strong Azusa Unified School District community. Our dual immersion program for Spanish starts at kindergarten. They're talking about opening up a K through eight. Where are they going to take these two hundred and fifty starting students and put them? They're not all going to be kindergarten students, are they? Are they going to test into other grades? Also, when we graduate, when our students graduate from our dual immersion program currently through the high school, they'll graduate with a syllable literacy. If there's, if a dual immersion Mandarin program school is going to open and they only go to eighth grade, they won't have that opportunity to have a syllable literacy. Language is important. Unfortunately, my family is an English-speaking home. However, my grandparents' first language is Spanish. It was just not passed down to their children or myself. I was excited to have dual immersion and be able to pass that on to my son, who is amazing at what he has learned from our district, from our dual immersion program in Spanish. My husband also speaks Greek and that's something we're working with our son as well. In two thousand and nineteen, uh, April, April two thousand and nineteen, there was a flyer that was um, sent home for a dual immersion Mandarin program. Uh, my son would have been starting TK. I was really excited about this because I would have put him into a dual immersion Mandarin program. However, the day that I received the flyer was the day of the meeting and I was unable to attend. Also, he was only starting TK and it was starting at kindergarten. Um, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we went into COVID. I'm assuming that it's probably just one of the things that kind of fell through the wayside because we didn't really have a chance to come back to it because of COVID. I implore our district, I implore you board, to relook into this option, a dual immersion program for our Azusa Unified Students, starting at kindergarten, going through high school, just like we're working on with our, with our um, dual immersion Spanish program. We already have our s- our Steam Academy here at Dalton. That, that is where the proposed site was, was Dalton. Um, look at it again. Take another peek. We, we see a want for it. However, I just do not feel that a charter school being brought into our district is the right decision for this district, given all the reorganization that we have already done, closing schools, moving students around. I, I just, I hope that you reject this proposal and look into adding a dual immersion Mandarin program for our students here in Azusa Unified School District. Thank you.
Next we have online Noe Falcon.
Good evening. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, board, um, and cabinet, uh, for taking this time and uh, discussing this uh, this, this important uh, um, decision that needs to be made, uh, that, that uh, is trying to be made within our city again. We, as everybody has talked, we just went through um, closing of schools, um, merging of schools, bringing uh, from one high school, from two high schools down to one high school. Uh, what a big change that was, but there again, this started back in the sixties when they opened up Gladstone. And you know, I'm not trying to uh, um, say Gladstone was a bad idea, but back then, they didn't know what they were doing as far as separating the city. When Gladstone came online is a good thing, but then it separated the city. Now they're trying to bring the, the city back together and that's, that's where we're facing a lot of challenges right now. As an employee of the district uh, and as a part of the security team, I see the wants and the needs of all the children that um, that, that they're going through. Um, so in trying to bring a charter school into, into our city, we're gonna have the same issue again. The biggest issue also too is um, layoffs. We just went through a bunch of layoffs. People out of work. You know, if they, if they decide to get hired on, if uh, this charter school comes in, if they decide to hire them, there's no guarantee that they're gonna keep their jobs. Charter schools are at will. They can say, you know what, you're not working out for us. You're done, you're out the door. And again, we're losing more, you know, we're losing uh, citizens in our city because they're gonna leave. They're gonna have, try to find a work elsewhere. So, you know, board, we're asking you, please, you know, put this, you know, don't even, don't consider um, bringing in charter school when we're trying to fix our own district. You know, trying to get uh, back on our feet and running again. I mean, I don't, we've had, we've had too many failures in the city. Do we need another one? It's, you know, this is on you, board. You know, you're, we put you guys in that uh, in that position to make the right decisions and bringing in a charter school is the wrong decision for our city. So please, please, please do not approve their uh, their petition or uh, to bring them in. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next we have on mine Diana Reyes Williams.
Hello.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Hello, you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, name, uh, Diana Reyes William, uh, active community member. I'm a former Azusa petitioner who worked on for the community on inclusion and harmony, uh, bringing the community together. And um, I want to talk about um, the, the Mandarin Dual Immersion Program. Um, first of all, I understand that this was a program that was attempted, however, there was no interest in interest, and so I would take another look. Uh, I am opposed to this proposed charter. I ask you to reject the Top Notch Academy proposal petition. And I ask that you also uh, take a look at the signatures and make sure first, um, one of my first reasoning for, for rejecting the petition is that we are in the first year of district-wide reorganization. Now is not the time. And I think I find it very disappointing to, to open up in Azusa as we reorganize our district and make it even better than it was before. If there was an interest in community, then why did these community members not show an interest in the manual, in the being offered? I'm gonna end with this. We are one as the Unified School District. Inclusive is about addressing the needs of all children. Pacific focus on the more vulnerable to marginalization and exclusion. Here's there's a need, so let's work and attempt to add a dual immersion program in Mandarin. Thank you very much.
Next we have, next we have Esther Compos.
Good evening, board member Bo, um, board president Bo and board members, cabinet members. Um, I hope you can all hear me clearly. I once again come to you this evening to address you as a constituent, um, but also a longtime educator of Azusa Unified School District. Um, as, you know, for the parents that are there in support of the Mandarin program, uh, dual immersion top-notch Steam Academy, please come visit us. We open our doors to you, our elementary schools, our middle school, our high school. Come visit us and see what we are doing. Because everything that Top Notch is offering, we are offering in our public schools as well. Um, I wanna speak about the dual-language immersion, the fact that we've offered Mandarin and only one family in the entire city of Azusa took the opportunity to apply. If a dual-language immersion program in Mandarin is what we need now because the times have changed, then that's up to the board and the district administration to find a way to provide that program within our public school system for Azusa students. But don't take valuable funds away from our kids who desperately need it, especially after the reorganization. We have great things happening. Look at what the, the commendations, the honors that were given to two of our schools, GMS, Gladstone Middle School and Lee Elementary. Steam, the arts program, what a great way to showcase that then in our Golden Days Parade and having Lee Elementary win an award for that. There's so many wonderful programs. We have students going to top-notch universities in this country, many on scholarships. Parents who want their, this program, please come see what we're doing in Azusa. And to the board, as your constituent, I am asking you to please don't allow a charter school in our district. Please do not allow the interest of a few to impact the majority of our kids. Thank you.
Next we have Hilda Quinones.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, cabinet and community. My name is Hilda Quinones and I am a classified employee, a community member, and I also have two children in our district. I believe others have already expressed all the reasons why we oppose the approval of, we oppose the approval of the charter school. So I'm not gonna take too much more of your time. I oppose the approval of the charter school and I implore you to do what is in the best interest of our community as a whole and the, and for our students. Thank you.
Want to circle back to two members of the public who signed up for public comment. Uh, do we have Kit Sai or Yi Chang in attendance? Are there additional blue cards, members of the public? This is a public hearing. Oh, well.
大家晚上好，我叫罗琳。
Uh, hold on, hold on, hold on. Um, so first, as a point of order, do we have Kit Sai or Yi Chang here? Uh, they had submitted a blue card earlier this evening.
My name's Lauren. My English name Cindy.
Oh, hold, hold on, hold on. So Cindy Crawford was so I am, uh, we're navigating this together, right? I'm following the list of the blue cards. Right? So I want to, that's why I'm going back to the two names that I called previously to ensure that those folks that I named Kit Sai and Yi Chang, if they are still present, that they get their time. And you, you sort of, you said there's no one outside, so everyone who would be present would be here. Okay? Um, so we've, we've, have we hope exhausted the blue cards submitted for people in person? And then Lika, have we exhausted the list of? Okay, so what is the name of this? Is there Teresa Lee? So Ms. Lee, are you going to make public comment? Well, you've, you've submitted a card. Yes.
Okay, but, well, point, point, point of order, point of order though, because this is, is, this is someone from the audience who's speaking, but I have a, I have a similar question or point of order.
Yes, and, and, and I, I will, yes. Let me just bring us back to the container again. Uh, I want to make sure that we're respecting our norms and our so I'm not trying to cut anyone off or exclude anyone from anything. I want to make sure that we uh, hold to our process and procedure. So I'm going to first, board members, colleagues, uh, ask our superintendent and or legal counsel here about the procedure for public hearing. Do we have regulation, administrative regulations, board bios or past practices that inform how we operate public tech public comment during, right? Mr. Takea.
We did not denote at the beginning of the meeting like a closed time for blue cards. Um, as noted, this blue card was just rushed over uh, right now. Uh, but um, we did not denote anything in the beginning that would say, you know, at this time we're gonna stop blue cards or this time we're gonna start uh, raised hands. Um, but that is uh, board president and the board uh, to decide in terms of uh, next steps.
Okay, so, so with that, so, so with that, I am going to members of the if we can kick the container here. Again, this is going to be a process that we follow. Given, colleagues, given that we did not say at the outset the end time or a cutoff period for submission of public comments, we have the ability as a board to make a decision as a board here. I would love to entertain a suggestion as a starting point, and whatever we agree on as a board, we will follow.
So I actually have, I have two concerns. Um, one is maybe I, I should have called for a point of order earlier and I did not. Uh, which is the, I think it's a slippery slope to do two things. One, to allow members to yield, uh, blue card submitters to yield their time to a second speaker, I think is a slippery slope. And so, um, that, and that's something that we can address uh, more formally in, in the future. Um, so, but that was, that would be something that I would, I would be opposed to and specifically to the question that you're asking. I think it is, uh, it would additionally be a slippery slope if we um, just can, continue to endlessly open, uh, keep, keep it open. The, uh, one, another procedure that we have for our normal public comment is that there is a, that there's a time limit and once we get past a certain time, the, the board then votes to continue to, to um, keep those open. I believe that at this point, the amount of time that has been spent where the, where the comment has been open on this item and there was ample opportunity for people to submit comments that I, I think though we did not specifically denote that, um, it's my sense that, that there has been sufficient time. So if we open up for blue cards at, at this point, I, I think that uh, would not be, would not be best or appropriate.
I would also like to express my concern that it is the responsibility of of the parent to make sure that when we are in uh, opening up a hearing, to be able to have the time limit to denote and let the public know when we are done taking blue comments either online, because people were just jumping in. This is um, it, it's, it's two hours in. Um, I, I would agree, it's a slippery slope, it's a procedure. And I, another thing too, be giving time to somebody who has not seen a blue card and seeing they're just up there is not how we do things here in Azusa Unified School District. Board member, uh, board vice president?
Um, yes, I also agree. I believe that in, in prior, I've, I've been here the longest as a board member and in the past when we've had um, many speakers, we, prior to the meeting, we'd set our time. In other words, we're gonna do it twenty minutes of justice or thirty minutes, number one. Number two, we would also decide prior, are we gonna let them give it to another person? Because I have, the board president would, would, with our colleagues and we just, you know, what are we gonna do of this? And so we knew we were gonna have a big crowd. Uh, and I think this is what the big confusion is, because now we're just doing like the middle of the screen. So, and I don't feel that someone should just come up and say, okay, now it's fifteen, you can speak, or you're not here, so you can come back later and speak. That's a slippery slope to me.
Board member Ben Rivas?
Well, I share some of the concerns that my colleagues on the board share as well. Um, one of the things that concerns me is that if we allow the cards to come in at this juncture, then we're kind of setting a precedence for the future. And I really don't feel that we need to go that route. Just because we overlooked something, we have to ensure that we follow, you know, our policies and our rules. So I think that we need to, as a board, we need to stand firm on, on not setting the precedent of allowing something like this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues, and thank you for your um, your feedback on the role of the, the president. It's um, it's, it's, as you all have served as president, uh, a task that is stressful at best and when there is a lot of public participation, it's a, it becomes a more to handle. Again, I want to stress that I and my colleagues here want to follow procedure precedent. And I will, I agree with my colleagues about ending public comment and the public hearing, given that we have exhausted the permitted list of names of blue cards in person. And you'll notice we did that in person. I called out to the two people that had submitted. And you'll notice we did that in person. I called out to the two people that had submitted the names to make sure that we didn't miss them. And then we went to the folks, to the participants online and we went through those names. Um, I also know that at times in different meetings, for variety of meetings. Speakers have yielded, we've allowed as a board to, speakers to yield their time to someone else. And so I, and I am fine with not allowing that, to say that. My three minutes, your three minutes, your three minutes, and I am absolutely, uh, on board with that because. I believe that what's good for one is good for all. So with that, colleagues, I think I.
I have something else to add.
Yes.
So also, um, when you mentioned, if the person is not here at the time. Not here at the time, you cannot wait and say, okay, you can come back later or, or what have you. You have to be actually here. They know they're going to speak. They do turn a card, so they should be here. So we should not even do that. I mean, as far as that comes, but also the timing, it's happened. We have allowed them to other, to give each other, but it's the decision of the board. We didn't have any input on it at all. We didn't discuss that prior. But I, I, um, I don't recall ever like waiting for the person to come or they're not here. If they're not here, they're not here and you just move forward and just keep going.
Thank you. And so with that, do we have consensus among our, our five board members that we will now close the public hearing at this time?
Second.
Not sure that's an action item, but I can, consensus is. Okay.
Can I also ju- just ask if we, um, have, have we been able to hear from our, our legal, just, I know that was requested to weigh in on the, this as a procedure?
Uh, we surely can. Um, Ms. Leslie, uh, Locker from F3. Uh, is, if, um, you would like her to weigh in on this?
So, uh, question about that, I'm looking at my notes. So there's the. Side or component of our public hearing, and then there's also the opportunity for board members to ask questions. So are we doing that during the hearing? And then after board comments and questions are exhausted, we would then close the.
That's, so now the public comment is ended. This is an opportunity for board members to ask the questions that they may have.
I will let, thank you. I will let you know that, uh, staff and legal is still conducting a substantive review of the petition. So I would just be mindful of that when asking questions. Um, and there will be an opportunity, as the superintendent shared, um, on December, I believe nineteenth, there will be a special board meeting. During which a second public hearing will be held. And that will be the time in which the board will take action on the petition, whether it is to approve or to deny the petition. So no action will be taken at this meeting and there also will be no need for a motion, um, and a second to, to close the public hearing. So the order would be for the board to ask any questions they may have. And then at that point, um, once those have been exhausted, then you can go ahead and close the meeting. Okay, thank you so much.
Uh-huh, my pleasure. Point of order, we, we, uh, are we still going to reach a consensus? I just heard a motion a second and we went straight to the lawyer. So I would like to, to ask for, uh, with an interaction. Yes, I, uh, given that we've had a discussion and it's not an, I, I'm loathe to add an action item when it's not an action item. Um, given we're here sitting in front of our community, a consensus without taking a, without making a motion for an item. I believe is sufficient. So I'm, I'm seeing nodded heads.
I would be in favor of closing public comment.
Favoring closing public comment at this time.
Also myself, I'm favored.
I agree.
And I'm also in favor of ending the public comment portion of the hearing. We'll now continue the public hearing with questions and comments from our board members. Ms. Ariana?
Uh, yes, um, President Bo. I, I believe that it's important that the community, uh, let our audience know that they can take a seat now. As, as, as we go into now, our comments or questions. They're, they're at the. I, I just want them to think that, I would like for them to understand what we just, what we as a collective. Just all agree on.
Thank you. And if there are any extra chairs in the room, I invite any members of anyone who's here to come grab a chair. And now we will continue our public hearing. This part of the public hearing will be for board questions and or comments. I'm gonna, I would ask that we, in, in terms of following a order, just go down the line and we'll go through as many rounds as. We see fit. Board member Greer.
So, uh, a question I have for Superintendent Ortega and staff. Would you be able to speak to past, current and or future? Interest. Willingness, openness to dual immersion Mandarin within the Azusa Unified School District, um, uh, school sites.
As was, uh, noted today, uh, in the past, uh, we, uh, did. Uh, I have attempted, uh, to drum up some business and some interest in a dual language, uh, Mandarin. Uh, program. Uh, but as was stipulated today, we got very little interest when we got to the, uh, the forms, uh, the interest forms. Uh, to, to move forward with that. Uh, we pride ourselves in our dual language immersion, uh, program. Uh, we do a ninety-ten model. Um, we have been featured in the county and statewide, uh, for our approach in dual language. And so, um, we, per given board direction, we would, we would definitely, uh. Can, um, move in that direction if that's something that the board would want.
I have no comment. Thank you.
Um, I was just going to ask, do the petitioners have another charter school that's open other than the summer school that they had, um, this summer?
Um, we do not have any charter school open.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um, no more questions.
I think, um. Kind of back to, uh, board member Greer's, um, question, but. I know I heard one of the public, during public comment. Um, I think it was Ms. Fish talked about, um, in two thousand and nineteen. They offered the Mandarin program and then I think she said because COVID hit. So I kind of just wanted to, um, please, Mr. Superintendent Ortega, if you could just elaborate on that. Have we explored it after that or I was just kind of wondering?
Um, it definitely was not because of, uh, COVID hit. Um, again, we have, we held, uh, community meetings, we had interest meetings. Uh, we had those meetings at school sites, we had those meetings in community centers, uh, we had the meetings here at the district office. Uh, to talk about, uh, the program, uh, that we, uh, wanted to open. Uh, but at the end of the day, uh, there was, uh, no, very little interest in opening up a, a program at that time.
Mr. Ortega, um. Were those community meetings held under your tenure as superintendent or was that under the, the superintendent?
That was under the previous superintendent.
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, I had talked to your predecessor about the dual immersion Mandarin program. And Dr. Kaminsky told me directly that the reason we didn't have a dual Mandarin, or we weren't able to launch a dual Mandarin. Dual immersion Mandarin was because we're not able to find Mandarin teachers. And I'm, so I'm hearing something different and in the interest of. Understanding, interest, implementation, um, I share that. And, and with that, I have no further questions. I'm just going to take an eyeball. Thank you, board colleagues. This now concludes our public hearing. Um, for the record, we opened our public hearing at eight seventeen PM. And we are now closing our public hearing on this matter at nine thirty-nine PM. Moving to item fourteen point two, presentation of surplus property update, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, board president. Uh, prior to, uh, today's meeting, um, I believe that you had an interest in calling a recess.
Um, we'll take a two-minute recess. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for indulging us in that brief recess. We will now continue our meeting. With item fourteen point two, presentation of surplus property update. This is an info item, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, Dr. Bo. Um, if I may, uh. As concisely as I can, uh, just want to paint the picture and the context of our surplus property. Um, as you know, uh, we had a surplus property committee that came together. Uh, made recommendations to the Board of Education, the Board of Ed- Education accepted, uh, that report to make our, our properties, uh, surplus. Since then, um. Two things, uh, have happened. Uh, number one, staff has made a recommendation. Um, and ma- maybe clear, I should say, staff, and I think the surplus property, uh, has made a recommendation, uh, to use. The former Slosson Middle School. As, uh, as an option to give Sierra High School its own school. Doing so, uh, we envision, uh, that could also be, uh, a place to. Expand and modernize the central kitchen that exists there. Our nutrition services, our department headed by Ms. Sasha, uh, Jamal. Has been doing an amazing job in terms of trying to increase the amount of scratch cooking in Azusa. A modernized, expanded kitchen would only help, uh, those endeavors. Uh, we also can visualize, uh, some departments or some teams, uh, that might, uh, be. At Slosson Middle School, uh, as well. In addition, uh, we have, uh, recommended that Center Middle School. Uh, become something like a community and conference center. Uh, triple C, as we call it in, in-house right now, um. But. We opportunity to go visit, uh, three districts and we have learned, uh, quite a bit. In terms of what we might, what imprint we might want to have. Here in the community, uh, uh, in Azusa. So we do see it as a dual, dual. There's the community center and then there's the conference center, much needed space in terms of. Uh, meetings, professional learning, uh, activities and so forth. That, if that were to, uh, be affected, that leaves. Properties or surplus properties up for discussion. Their recommendation.
Four, okay, thank you.
Yep. Mandate, uh, by the Board of Education, I'm, uh, very, uh, happy to say. Uh, that Lauren Jennings, uh, from DCG Strategies is. To really walk you through. What are options in terms of these four properties? Um, during the walkthrough of those options, the. Uh, to provide some real life. Things to consider in terms of pros and cons. And some timelines associated, uh, with those, those options. I want to denote that those options, per my request, are in alphabetical order, to not denote a favoritism one way or the other. Um, and so with that being said, uh, one more thing, so tonight. We hear some possibilities to do surplus and then on December fifth, we have a study session. Where that entire meeting will be dedicated for the board to have an opportunity to, to discuss. Uh, to dream, to think about and hopefully, uh, to provide some direction, uh, at that point. So with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Lauren. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, uh, for having me. And as Superintendent Ortega stated, I will be sharing some alternative use options for underutilized as well as surplus property. And all of these options are, um, I will be able to provide some examples. And of course, as always, if you have questions, uh, feel free to stop me throughout any. And of course, as always, if you have questions, feel free to stop me throughout any portion of the conversation. And I'll be happy to elaborate and/or provide additional context or take notes and bring back further information for further consideration. So just as a quick reminder, we can go to the next slide. My name is Lauren Jennings. I'm with DCG Strategies. We've been working with the school district for a little over a year now and really assisting you with understanding the options for your real estate. And potentially, we're going to go further into that in terms of what are some alternative use options now that you have declared properties as surplus. And so this next slide here, these are not new questions, but typically when we work with school districts, these are questions that we deem as best practice, that school district, staff, and board should really be asking as you're considering what to do with your real property assets. And so I have these questions here, again, not to bring you new questions, but these are questions that the district has already considered. And so this is just a reminder and really a refresher of sort of the process that we've been on. And typically what we say, the first question is one of the most important. And it's really what are board policies and objectives? And so that is really important to state in the very beginning, because then that then allows you when you make decisions about your real estate, to then base your decisions off of those board policies and objectives. We'll go to the next slide here. And so before I get into some of the options, I always like to just level set and also talk about some of the cost of inaction. And so there are some actual monetary, physical dollar costs associated with inaction when it comes to underutilized and surplus property. And then there's also just goodwill costs and opportunity costs, which I'll be able to share a little bit about. And so the, the four that are listed here again are just meant to be a summary. So in terms of actual dollar costs, there are non-use fees that are associated with school district properties and schools that are either vacant or not used. And so typically, it's a minimum, there is a waiting period that's associated, but after a certain time period, typically five years, the district will be assessed what's called non-use fees for property that sits vacant. And so that actually is a monetary cost that's associated with underutilized property. Another example is vandalism. I were working with a few, one school district in particular, they closed a school site two years ago. And within the past two years, there have been two fires at the school. One was a small fire. The second was a large fire which caused the district to have to demolish the buildings because it was just a nuisance in the neighborhood. And so vandalism definitely is a cost of inaction for leaving property vacant. Same as if it were to be a residential home, you know, you never want to leave a home vacant because it's just a cause for unwarranted activity at the property. And then the final two are just opportunity costs in terms of what are we giving up? And what could we potentially be doing with our property that it would be an opportunity cost for us just allowing it to sit vacant? And then it does potentially have the ability to hurt district goodwill, again, in the sense if property is left vacant where the community then is, is, has to deal with the ramifications of potential vandalism. So we'll go to the next slide. And so the question then becomes, if a school district determines that an asset is either underutilized, surplus, and/or of no strategic value, then what are the options that you have to do with your property? And so we have five options that we'll discuss this evening. And they're listed here, and then in the following slides, again, they're in alphabetical order. So in the following slides, I'll be able to touch on each one of them. And I'll probably just pause briefly after each option in case there's questions. And so the first option that we'll discuss is employee workforce housing, which I'm sure everyone has heard of and is familiar with. We'll go to the next slide. And this is a hot topic throughout a lot of school districts in California. And so employee workforce housing is essentially the idea that a school district, it's, it's used as a potential retention as well as recruitment strategy for districts. And it's essentially where a school district provides rental housing for its employees. And so a lot of people say teacher housing, but it's really employee housing, because it's not just for teachers, it's also for for all district employees. And so there's generally, I'm just gonna go high level, there's a ton that I could share about employee workforce housing. I'm happy to answer additional questions. But in general, there's really three options that school districts have used to be able to provide housing for its employees. And so the first option, I would say is sort of, if there had to be a traditional option, the option that we see school districts go with most often. And that is where the school district fully funds the construction and development of the housing, and the housing is provided on district-owned land. And so when I say the district fully funds, standard financing sources would be typically a general obligation bond, so where the school district would place a bond on a ballot. And the bond would either be approved and taxpayers would pay that. Or another option would be a certificate of participation, which is essentially a loan that's taken out against the expected future revenue that is to be made from the rental rates of the property. And so this option was, it was recently successfully pursued by Jefferson Union High School District. So that is a district in Northern California, in Daly City. They took the route of financing via both. They did certificates of participation as well as a general obligation bond. And so for each of these options specifically for employee housing, as well as all of the options, I have listed some pros and cons. And disclaimer, these are, these are DCG recommended pros and cons. And so this is our personal opinion and our advice that we're providing with them. And so one of the pros of this option with employee housing is that the district has total control over the rents. Total control to say what the rental rates will be, total control over the asset in general. But then also with total control also comes total risk. And so that is an associated con with that in terms of the district is responsible for acquiring all funding. And I will say, working with a lot of school districts and trying to assess feasibility, typically that's where school districts, I would say that's the biggest hurdle to get over is how do we pay for it? We know we want it, we know there's demand, we know we have the land, but how do we pay for it? And so that is something to consider. And we'll go to the next slide, and I'll talk about the second option in terms of making employee housing available. This option is a little similar, but it's a little different. This is where the district would partner with a market rate developer. Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Of course you can.
Your last slide, it's okay, we, we ask questions.
Yeah, sure, yeah, we can go back to the last slide.
Yeah, my concern is on the rental. So how do you decide, you know, would you say we have twenty, thirty homes? And you have fifty people that apply for it. You know, I think that would be a problem, trying to determine who is the person that's gonna rent it? And just saying, if for some reason you want to remove someone, that's another conflict. I mean, it's kind of, I, I personally feel that we're not in the business of rental.
Oh, a thousand percent.
My opinion.
Yeah.
I think, I think that it would just be more of a burden than we have to deal with. That's where the come in, right?
Yeah, so I completely agree with you. The school district, you should not be in the business of renting. And so successful employee housing projects put in safeguards and they put there's, it's, it's a part of the programming which goes into way further down the road if you do decide to go there.
I mean, we're about to put more money into it in, in, into, you know, you know, spend money, we're, we're trying to save money, we're trying to, you know, earn money to look at the pieces that we have already.
Right, there, there is.
At this moment, I think, I don't think this would be a good option. Just wanted to say that.
Yes, appreciate that. Any other questions or comments about that first option? Okay, I'll go to the.
Ms. Jennings, I do have a question, and it was around in what you've seen with districts that have established workforce, workforce housing, are those market rates?
So typically, no, they are below market rate, and that's the sort of, that's the draw of them. And so the districts, depending on what model you choose to go with, would be able to choose what that rental rate is. So for example, there are some districts where they set the rental rates at as a percentage of whatever market rate is. So for example, there's one school district in Northern California that is very far into the process. The units have not opened yet, but they have decided to set their rental rates at thirty percent below whatever current market rate is. For Jefferson Union High School District, they recently opened in April of last year. Their rental rates are set at, I believe, fifty-seven percent of market. So that's one way to do it. Another way to, to do it is being able to base it off of employee salary levels. And true affordability, financial experts say that true affordability means that an individual or a household should spend no more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And so being able to set it at a, as a percentage of employee salary really helps to be able to make sure that rental rates are truly affordable, because if it's thirty percent below market, that could still be more than thirty percent of my household income. So that is a part of the assessment and feasibility that goes into, you know, how do we make it work and what our options are.
So also then we would have to hire someone to monitor these houses, right? Our employees are very busy right now.
Yeah, so, so that is one of the best practices that we always recommend by, and absolutely no way is you as the Board of Trustees or staff should be responsible for managing it. We always recommend hiring a professional outsourced property management firm to serve as the main point of contact for rentals and to handle the, the property itself. Also, we recommend establishing a separate nonprofit board that would govern the, the facility rather than, of course, it would be established by you as the board, but rather than you also having to manage that as well too. So there's a lot that goes into it.
Yeah.
I have a question on Jefferson High School. Did you say that they use both the obligation bond and took out a loan?
Yeah, so typically with COPs, which are certificates of participation, as well as general obligation bonds, you typically, any sort of financing, you typically do more than one. And so with Jefferson Union High School District, their construction costs were seventy-five million. I believe they took, they passed a forty-five million dollar bond. And then the remaining thirty million was financed via certificates of participation.
I right now, just a comment that from what I understand, there is no affordable housing state, you know, cities don't have that mandate anymore since redevelopment went away. And that's my understanding. And so there is no affordable housing. I mean, those projects that are doing that, I mean, wow, because there, there is no mandate, right, to offer that? And right now with this inflation, cost of, I mean, from what I understand, it's forty-five percent of household income is going into your principal and interest payment for a home. Not thirty percent, right?
Well, Sue, the thirty percent is just financial experts say in order to be affordable, anything over that is considered cost burden.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what the, what the real, the actual rate is, but.
Yeah, I, I think I've heard that right now, when you, you take it all the way the market is right now, you're at forty-five percent.
Yeah. Go ahead. Okay, so the second option, and I'll breeze through this, because this is, we have other options to discuss as well, but another way to provide rental housing to employees is by partnering with a market rate developer. And the developer funds the construction and provides the financing. And in return, the district secures a percentage of the units. So an example of a school district that went with this model is Oakland Unified School District. So our team, we worked with Oakland Unified School District, they had a school site that was vacant for over ten years. And they did a long-term ground lease with the developer. The developer is fully funded construction. And in, as a part of the development and a part of the agreement, the developer promised or guaranteed that at least fifty percent of the units will be made available as a first right of refusal to district employees. And so that is another option. Obviously, some of the pros are the district is not, is not responsible for the financing, which is one of the hardest pieces. And so the district doesn't assume that financial risk. And also the developer manages all aspects of the development. And then, of course, depending on the model that's used, typically that would come with a ground lease in which the district would make or would receive revenue income over the course of the lease term. Some of the cons associated with this model as opposed to the others is that, of course, as you bring in more partners, and there is some sort of loss of control, meaning that the district doesn't have full control over it, over the development itself. And then also too, because the district isn't putting up the financial risk, then the district also doesn't likely see the financial return. So typically, the, the revenue that's made from the project would go to the developer, because they are assuming all of the risk on it. Another example is Milpitas Unified School District. They went with, it's the same model where they partnered with a developer. However, it's not on district-owned land, it's on a separate property. And so, again, it would be where you would receive a percentage of the units, and the percentage is likely going to be a smaller percentage than it would be if you were to do the project on your own. Any questions about this model?
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
In looking at the pros and cons on this slide, bullet one says it's a property is district-owned, the structure, typical structure would be a ground lease with some type of revenue stream. And then in the, under the cons, it says district doesn't share any financial benefit or control. So does that mean if the property, in that instance, if the district sold the property, then that would be its sole financial benefit, but there would be no ongoing financial benefit because it would not have control of the land?
Well, so with this mod, with this option, it would, the model would be a ground lease. And so the district would receive a nominal rental rate for, you're essentially leasing the dirt, you're leasing your land, you're not leasing the buildings. And so you would receive a nominal rental amount or lease amount monthly. Under the cons, when we say the district doesn't share any of the financial benefit, the financial benefit is from the rental rates of the, the units. And so all of that would go to the developer typically. Obviously, everything is up for negotiation, but sort of the standard would be that you would receive a rental, a, a ground lease rate that is a nominal amount. And then the developer would receive all of the revenue that's associated from the rental of the units.
And in that structure with the ground lease, there's a nominal revenue, ongoing revenue stream. And the district retains ownership of the property.
Yeah, so with a ground lease, it's set for, you know, a specified time. Typically, if you're doing something where there's construction of housing or a large fee, typically a long term, so probably no less than fifty years, up to ninety-nine years. And so at the end of the lease term, the property and the, the land would revert back to the district.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I'll go over the last and final option as it pertains to employee housing. And so this option is a little similar, but also a little different. We'll go to the next slide. And this is where the district would partner with an affordable housing developer to build publicly subsidized units on either likely district property. And so an, an example of a school district who went this route is Los Angeles Unified School District. And so with this, again, it's some of the same benefits and pros in the sense of the district does not assume full financial risk for construction, as well as the district would not manage all development. You would essentially bring in and hire an affordable housing developer who would manage all aspects. And then you would also hopefully get the benefit of public subsidies. Some of the cons associated with that is that public subsidies are extremely competitive. And as I'm sure you probably are aware, anytime you use public funds or governmental funding, it always comes with restrictions. And so in this case, the restrictions would be based off of income limits. And so we say, if you do consider going through this route, it's really important to understand what the associated income limits are that are tied to the public subsidies. And then being able to cross-examine that in relation to your employee salary levels. Because when I say income restrictions, typically with public subsidies, there is an income cap that is required for eligibility to use to live in the units. And so the one thing that the district would not want is for most of your employees to not even be eligible to live in the unit. So it's just always something to consider, but it's another option nonetheless. And then this next slide just is, you know, if there's questions, there's a lot, as you can probably see, that goes into assessing finance, feasibility for employee housing. And so I always say that there's really three questions that an analysis should help to answer, and this should likely be completed by a third-party consultant. Yes.
This is an ask question, so. I just asked a question. So why are we spending so much time speaking about, I thought we were going to think about, excuse me, our best options is leasing, buying, and we're spending so much time, why are we speaking about housing, you know, and?
This was just a follow-up because at the last board meeting, there were, there was, the board did request some high-level information on the options for employee housing. So I was sharing that as a request from the board, but I'm happy to move on.
I recall there was one board member that, that asked that question. I do.
So Ms. Jennings, if you could pause for a moment. So colleagues, we do have our board biola that indicates our board meetings will end at ten thirty unless we vote to extend the time. Given that it's ten oh nine, I'd like to take the temperature about how you'd like to end the time at which you'd like to end today's meeting.
I, I would like to end it and continue this because, you know, we have questions, and if it's going to go past ten thirty, you know, I, I have to take into consideration, you know, the, the cabinet that has to come here in the morning, you know, I don't work, so, you know, whatever, what, you know, people work here, right? And I have to think about them, even with the audience. And, and, and I, you know, and this is why I, I'm saying, you know, we're talking so much about this rental thing. It's, we should already be speaking about the sales, the, the lease and everything, you know, but it's going to take a while. So that, that's just my point. I think, I think we need to continue this. I don't know how, how it would work, you know, Mr. Ortega, or we attach it to another meeting. I, I'm not sure. But, but I think, as I'm looking at the page, another one, another one, it'll be longer. It'll be longer. And yeah, we had, we've had a long day.
Thank you. Board Member Manley, this, your thoughts?
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable continuing as, as well. I mean, because I think each slide is going to generate more questions, so it's just going to prolong it. I don't know that we'll get out of here at ten thirty. So I, I think it might be best to continue it or put it on another agenda, is it for another meeting? That's, that's what my thoughts are.
Yeah, because I don't want to rush it just because you want to hurry and get out of here. I, I, that's the reason when we placed the ten thirty vote was because you're saying voting is saying yes and no just because you want to get out. And that's not a valid way of doing just a presentation.
Board, Board Co. Carrionis? Okay. Board Member Greer?
I would, I would be in favor of ending our meeting at ten thirty, not, not extending our, our meeting past ten thirty, seeing what we can get through, and if we need to add this to a future meeting, then doing so.
Board Member Ariana?
I would agree with my colleagues.
I also agree that we want to give this item enough airtime, and given that we do already have a study session scheduled for December fifth devoted solely to surplus property discussion. Ms. Jennings, I would like to invite you back to that meeting to be able to complete the presentation and have the board have fresh eyes and ears to engage in a robust discussion. Will you be available?
Yes. December fifth, correct?
December fifth.
Yeah. So shall I end then? Is that what you're requesting?
I think we are at a good ending point, given that,
Okay.
given what we've just discussed. Thank you so much for spending a long evening with us.
Thank you for waiting to the end.
This brings us to item fifteen, one, adjournment. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call for the vote. And this meeting is adjourned at ten thirteen PM. Thank you.